We are going to get started right away. If you're new to the room, please listen up. One of the challenges we have here is hearing people even though we have a much better sound system. So conversations in the back create sort of a lot of noise that we have trouble getting people on tape and trouble hearing them at the table. So it is a public hearing, want everyone to be heard and recorded. We'll be calling in a moment after we get started for deferrals. People who cannot proceed with their case today will ask you to come forward, not right now, but in a few minutes. We will ask you why you can't proceed. We prefer to go ahead and keep the schedule and the docket moving. We have an extra-long agenda now because of the economics and development situation in our city. And we are being recorded and taped for television, so be aware when you're here, you are not only on the record, but you're on the big screen, okay? Mr. Rajo?
First case is call of the chair. It's 465 East Third Street, Ward 6. BOA number 379917. This is a request to repair the existing foundation in, at the garden level and to extend living area from the first floor to the garden level. Violation is Article 57, Section 9, floor area, area ratio excessive. Rear yard usable open space insufficient. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Andrew Frank, address 465 East Third Street, South Boston.
Okay, would you refresh the board why we had to call you back? We couldn't finish last time.
Yes, thank you. Last time I had an original set of plans that was submitted to the building department, and it was followed up with a secondary set that cleared code violations. I still have the zoning violations that you referenced. The, the code violation that Mr. Pizzani referenced and asked me about last month was why does my stair go from common through private to another common area, which was the mechanical room in the basement?
Okay.
And I have a revised set of plans here, and maybe Mr. Pizzani already has it.
Do you have it, sir?
Which, which reconciles that.
I have a set of plans dated 6/214, is that it?
That's the one.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Chairman, the, now, is this a one or two family?
It's a two-family.
Okay. So the basement unit, the access to the basement unit is from a new stair that goes only down to the garden level, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, fine. Okay, Mr. Chairman, what they've done is they've introduced a stair that clearly connects the first-level plan with the basement-level plan, takes it out of the common realm while still having common access to the mechanical room, which is.
Exactly.
Okay, that sounds good, right?
Yes, it's acceptable, make a motion to grant the refusal.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You're all set, sir, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Calling 42 Thompson Street, Ward 18. This is BOA number 379892. This is a request to construct a single-family dwelling. Violations are Article 10, Section 1, limitation of off-street parking areas, Article 69, Section 9, lot size and lot width insufficient, and Article 69, Section 29.5, maneuverability. Your name and address for the record, please.
John Pulginie, 10 Forbes Road, Braintree. Good morning. The zoning refusal you referred to, I was up here a couple weeks ago, and then actually was amended, so I can give you the, the carbon, there's no maneuverability, no monitoring issue on that, so there's the.
This is the new refusal letter?
That is correct.
Thank you. So according to the new refusal letter, the violations are Article 69, Section 9, insufficient lot size, insufficient lot width, and lot frontage minimum insufficient. Your name and address for the record, please.
John Pulginie, 10 Forbes Road, Braintree, Massachusetts.
Okay, yeah, we'll go right to the architect to see if he's had a chance to review the plans.
Uh, we do not have a drawing.
You have a drawing with you?
I have. They're not bedside?
Okay. I think, let me give him a second to review those. Is there anyone who came to be heard on this matter today? Thompson? Okay. I didn't mention it before, but we do take public testimony at our discretion. We don't take redundant testimony, and we don't take any testimony that's not related to zoning or to the hearing that we're discussing. However, we will do that, we'll start with elected officials. We hear each case on its own merit, and we'll decide right today whether it gets approved or not, and the testimony helps us do that. So David, you want to weigh in on this while we take a look at the plans?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the drawings are adequate.
They're adequate, okay, thank you. David?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. David McDonald, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. We met with the neighbors twice on this issue, and some, as you can see, a couple of them come in, come in in opposition, and we understand those concerns. They have concerns about the size of the, the house as comparison to what's in the neighborhood. Our issue is that the lot size and the lot width are congruent with what is existing in the neighborhood. There are no size violations, no violations related to the house, violations are related to the lot, so we would be recorded and support.
Okay, you recorded it what?
Support.
Okay, thank you. Walter?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Walter F. White, Councilor Tim McCarthy's office. For the same reasons, the violations deal with lot size and not house size, and so for that reason, we'd like to go on record and support the single-family congruent with most of the houses in the area. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Tom?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Tom McDonough from City Council Lodge, Steve Murphy's office. We too would like to go on record and support echoing your remarks, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Paul Sullivan, City Council, Michael Flaherty echoing the sentiments of the mayor's office as well as Council McCarthy's office to go on record and support.
Thank you. Okay, you neighbors want to be heard? Name and address first, please.
My name is Jennifer Dowdell, and my address is 40 Thompson Street, and I am a direct abutter to 42 Thompson Street. I am in agreement with the vast majority of our neighbors who are opposed to this particular lot, and for the record, I would like to submit a petition with 70 signatures from our neighbors that represent over 50 homes in the neighborhood. The house that is being proposed is out of character with the existing neighborhood and out of scale with the surrounding properties. What we're most concerned about is the lot width, because the lot is so narrow at 47.6 feet, 21% below the required minimum width of 60 feet. The proposed house will practically be encroaching on our property, and for the record, I would also like to submit a statement on behalf of myself and my husband. A survey has not been completed to mark the property lines. We asked a developer to stake out the property lines, and that's when it came to our attention that a tree is at risk of being cut down in order to accommodate the proposed driveway, and this particular tree sits between my property and the neighbor's property. The updated plans propose a driveway along the length of the lot with two parking spaces adjacent to our kitchen. The location of the parking spots are completely out of character with the neighborhood overall, and we will be adversely affected during the winter months when the cars are being heated, and the exhaust will be coming right into our kitchen due to the proximity of the driveway to our house. By allowing this house to be built in a neighborhood that has an average of 1,200 square-foot houses is setting a precedent for many of us who have double lots to be, to do potentially the same thing. Due to the scale of this project and the deficit of the lot width and size, we ask that you uphold the BRA zoning code regulations and the, and deny this particular project outright.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bill Roach, 32 Thompson Street. I realize the city wants to add more affordable single-family homes in the city, but in this case, this is not an affordable single-family home. The builder is planning on selling this home for over a half a million dollars, and it just does not fit with the neighborhood. The proposed size and the selling price just don't fit the character of the neighborhood, and I would kindly ask the board to take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, good morning. Anne Roach, 32 Thompson Street, and I just want to say that I'm also opposed to the project in support of my neighbor and my husband, and just to let you know that we garnered a lot of support from our neighbors, and it's not that we're opposed to building a home there, it's just that we're opposed to building a home that's so much larger and so out of character with the neighborhood. So we would hope that if anything is considered, perhaps a smaller home built on the lot might be considered. Thanks so much for your time.
Okay. Anybody else in favor, opposition, Thompson?
I'm just curious, how many square feet is the house?
It's going to be approximately 2,200 square feet.
And was it, was there any process back and forth with the neighbors about redesign to reflect some of their concerns?
Oh, we did. We had met with the neighbors two occasions, one to address the parking issue initially. We came up, asked for deferral, and then we actually, Mr. Michido went out to the site and to show them at their request where exactly this house would sit on the lot, and, you know, trying to work with the neighbors. So, you know, we've, we've done everything from our perspective that we could possibly do. The violation here is not the size of the house that sits on this property, it's the frontage. And if you look at the houses on this street, when they brought up the character, most of the houses on the street lots are 5,500 or less square feet, and most of the houses on this lot with are 47 to 40, 50 range.
So this is a pre-existing lot?
That is correct.
And is it in common ownership, or is it just a standalone pre-existing lot?
It's a standalone pre-existing lot that's on the same deed, so it is, it has its own curb cut that goes into this as, as it was to be a developed property at one point, so it is a separate lot, correct?
Okay, so it's, it's, the lot has been needed for a century at least?
Right, that's correct.
Because that's pretty common in the city. Okay.
Okay, and did you answer this question, how, what's the gross living area of the proposed house?
The gross living area was 2,200 square feet.
Okay, all right. All right, board members, what's the?
Motion for approval with BRA design review.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it's approved, thank you.
Thank you.
The next two cases are here for G-Cod, calling 429 to 429 A Columbus Ave, Ward 4. This is BOA number 401205. This is a request to change occupancy from four apartments and a restaurant to two apartments and a restaurant. Violation is Article 32, Section 4, G-Cod applicability. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mark LaCasse, 75 Arlington Street, Boston, attorney for the applicant.
Are we just considering the groundwater issue here?
The sole zoning violation is the Article 32 applicability, and we, we have received our Boston Water and Sewer Commission letter yesterday, so I'll submit it to the record. It's been sent to everybody.
Is there a representative from the Boston Brownwater Trust here?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Christian Semenelli, the Groundwater Trust, like to go on record and support of this project.
Thank you. Motion, please. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
You're all set, thank you.
Calling 292 Sharmada, Ward 3. This is BOA number 398530. This is a request to replace rear brick patio with a new patio and to add a new gate. Violation is Article 32, Section 4, ground G-Cod. Your name and address for the record, please.
James Haru, 292 Sharmann Avenue.
And where does your G-Cod, your groundwater approval stand today?
It's been approved by Boston Water and Sewer, Boston Parks Recreation Department, and ISD, take it over to you.
Christian?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We do have the letter from Water and Sewer, and they are in compliance.
May we have a copy of that letter, please? We don't have one for our records.
Okay, yep.
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you're all set. I'm just curious, is it because of the backyard drainage work, the affecting drainage is why you decided for G-Cod?
Yeah, the neighbor cut down a tree years ago. That tree was overgrown, so it uprooted my terrace. Just took the opportunity just to replace the terrace in kind, really, and as a result of the G regulations, we're putting a pipe to pick up the water from that terrace, so just replacing it in kind and at a gate.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Next case is here for board final arbiter. This is 98 East Brookline Street, Ward 8.
She's on her way?
We will hold it for a minute. Any of the applicants scheduled for 9:30 requesting a withdrawal or a deferral of their cases? What's the address, Mr. Maransy?
Two matters, Mr. Rajo. First is 1580 River Street.
Sorry, 1580 River Street?
Yes, Ward 18.
Calling 1580 River Street, Ward 18, BOA number 392836. This is a request to change the occupancy from a carpet warehouse to a 26-unit residential to residential. Your name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is George Maransy. I'm an attorney with the business address of 350.
Can you move the? I think, uh, we just, someone just stepped on a wire someplace. George, just speak up.
Uh, there we go. This is an Article 80 project, and we have not completed the Article 80 process with the BRA.
Motion for deferral.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor of deferral?
Aye.
Okay.
When do you expect to be done?
At least a couple months, Mr. Rajo.
Scheduling you for February 9th at 12:30.
Thank you.
And the second case?
Second matter is 18 Carpenter Street.
Calling 18 Carpenter Street, Ward 7. This is BOA number 397282. This is a request to convert the existing two-family to a three-family dwelling. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is George Maransy. I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. Mr. Chairman, we are meeting with the Andrews Square Civic Association in November. We have a November 1 community meeting scheduled, and this matter, we'd like to request to deferral the complete community process.
Motion to defer.
All right, all those in, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? What date might we have?
Uh, Mr. Maransy, will you be done by February 10th?
Yes.
Okay, for the previous case too, just to put it on the record, that it's been deferred to February 10th, 2015.
Okay. And those were at 11:30, right?
Okay.
At 11:30.
Okay, so, sorry, this is February 10th at 12:30.
12:30, thank you.
Okay. 12:30. Uh, sorry, the address, please?
93 Brunswick Street in Dorchester.
93 Brunswick, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Calling 93 Brunswick Street, Ward 14. This is BOA number 394939. This is a request to change the occupancy from a one to a three-family dwelling and to enclose the existing rear porches. Violations are Article 50, Section 11, lot area for additional dwelling unit is insufficient, usable open space and rear yard insufficient, FAR is accepted. Your name and address for the record, please.
Willie R. Sanders, 93 Brunswick Street in Dorchester.
Okay, you would like to defer your case, sir?
Yes. Due to architectural reason, we do not have the, the floor plans. We have restored the porch as a permit that was granted yesterday, and my contractor is restoring, and we should have that done 17th of next month.
Okay, motion, please.
Motion, defer. Second.
All those in favor of deferral?
Aye.
Again, we will see you on February 10th at 12:30.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, the, um, address, please?
65 Everett Street.
I'm sorry?
65 Everett Street, Alston.
Yes. Calling, and this is related to 61 Everett Street, too? Okay, calling 65 Everett Street, Ward 22. This is BOA number 400338. This is a request for the construct, the second building on a same, on the same lot. There is also 61 Everett Street, Ward 22. This is BOA number 400339. This is a building code violation. Your name and address for the record, please.
765 Everett Street.
What are you requesting?
We're requesting the refer, the referral because we need more time to work on the plans to make it more suitable for the neighborhoods, as well as we're trying to come up with a plan where we allow, we'll be able to do some improvements to the existing building.
Okay.
And also, we're trying to do some.
Want to be heard on this, Mr. Berkeley? Do you want to be heard on this? Paul?
Yes. My name is Paul Berkeley. I live at 44 Aldi Street in Alston. I'm president of the Alston Civic Association, and my understanding this morning why he's requesting a deferral is to fix up the existing property. He should do that, but I don't think it's going to affect this proposal in any way. He's got an undersized lot as it is with a two-family house on it, and now he's trying to put another one on it. There'd be no setbacks, no open space, no nothing. The front would be a garage door, so.
So, Mr. Berkeley?
He can, he can request a deferral to fix up the other house, but I really don't think anybody's going to change their opinion about the value of this.
Are you in opposition to the deferral, then?
Yes, I've submitted a letter in opposition.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, mayor's office.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. John Lott from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant did receive a vote in opposition from the Alston Civic Association based on their proposal, but we also held in a butters' meeting, and there was a good showing from a lot of the butters on Blaine Street that lived right behind the proposed project. So my office does support a deferral to see what sort of changes the applicant can come up with to make him more acceptable to the ACA, but, you know, this obviously, we could still oppose when he comes back.
Are we looking to build a new house on one lot and fix up a house on the other lot? Is that the proposal?
Yes. Same lot.
It's the same lot.
I'm sorry, Mr. Berkeley, how large is the lot?
I'm sorry, could you?
How large is the lot?
The lot is three thousand square feet. It's in a two-family, four-thousand-square-foot district, and he's trying to build a second house on this, on this same three-thousand-square-foot lot that already has a two-family house on it.
Thank you.
So, he'd basically fill the entire lot with building.
I'm going to make a motion.
Let's just hear this.
I'm going to make a motion for denial of the request for deferral.
I'm going to second it.
All those in favor of denial?
Aye.
Sir, we're not going to postpone your hearing. We're going to hear it today, okay?
Okay.
You can also withdraw your application if you don't want to go forward, but that's your call.
No, it's okay.
Okay.
The address, please, sir?
One thirty-eight Naponton Ave in Dorchester.
Calling one thirty-eight Naponton Ave, Ward sixteen. This is B.O.A. number thirty-nine, fifty-nine, forty-seven. This is a request to erect seven, a seven-unit dwelling and parking. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Douglas George, thirty-two Mayhew Street, Dorchester, Mass.
All right, who would you like, Mr. George?
I'd like to request the deferral. I'm meeting with the Pope's Hill Civic Association tomorrow evening, and then on October twenty-ninth, they have the community meeting with the city, and I expect to make good progress with the community, so I'd like to come back in December if I could.
Well, probably not, but, motion for deferral?
Was there a reason why you weren't able to meet with them earlier?
I'd started the outreach six months ago, but there was a lot going on in Pope's Hill, so they had asked me to wait, and I didn't know when I was having my date today until three weeks ago, though the mailings came out late.
Motion to defer. I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We will hear this case on January sixth at twelve-thirty.
Okay, sir, address, please?
Good morning, sixty-one Austin Street.
Thank you.
High Park.
High Park. You requesting a deferral?
Calling sixty-one Austin Street, Ward eighteen. This is B.O.A. number thirty-six, forty-four, fifteen. This is a requ, this is a request to confirm the occupancy as a two-family dwelling and to extend living space into the basement. Your name and address for the record, please.
Herculano Gomez, sixty-one Austin Street, High Park, Mass.
And you requesting a deferral, sir?
Excuse me?
You want to defer your case today?
Well, it's been about, maybe probably about a year and a half, I'm trying to do some extension in my basement as a-
No, no, we're not hearing your case. Are you, do you want to hear the case today, or do you want to defer it to a later date? Did you come to hear your case today, or?
Yes.
You're not prepared to hear your case today?
Yes.
Do you know what's going on? Because I don't.
Have you?
Fine, fine, well, just defer. He doesn't have the benefit of the process. Would you guide him through that so we don't-
I'll make a motion for deferral.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
We're going to see you back on February tenth at twelve-thirty.
Okay, thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
Any other applicants finally for nine-thirty requesting a withdrawal or deferral? Just to clear up the slate, is ninety-eight East Brookline Street here? It's the applicant for ninety-eight Brookline Street here, okay? Calling sixteen Winship Street, Ward twenty-two. This is B.O.A. number thirty-nine, fifty-three, eighty. Please have a seat at the table. This is a request, have a seat at the table. This is a request for two rear yard parking spaces. Violation of Article fifty-one, Section fifty-six, off-street parking design and maneuverability. Article fifty-one, Section fifty-seven, side yard regulations. Article fifty-one, Section nine, usable open space insufficient. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Pompeo Leoni, sixteen Winship Street, Brighton, oh-two-one-three-five. Only I want to do two parking in my lot. I have a letter from Mr. Visaki, he's over here, because we got a common driveway. Only I want to park my car inside because Winship Street and winter time is very tough.
Okay, thank you.
I don't ask anything else. Thank you, gentlemen.
Hey, just have it, just do, what does the plan look like for where he wants to park? The drawings are adequate. It shows two parking spaces accessed by a common passageway. Two parking spaces are in the rear of the property. There appears to be sufficient distance from the side yard. The space is about eight foot six by twenty foot. Okay, thank you. Who's speaking, John?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. John Lott from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We held in a butters' meeting between Mr. Leone and Mr. Visaki, and Mr. Visaki, the abutting neighbor, is perfectly on board. Full support.
Thank you, Alex.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Alex Chase speaking on behalf of District City Council, Mark Sciamo. Echo the comments in the Mayor's Office, and we'd like to be on record in support. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Tom McDonough from City Council at Large. Steve Murphy's office would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Paul Sullivan, City Council, Michael Flaherty would like to go on record in support.
Motion for approval?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, sir, you, two spaces.
Thank you very much.
Calling sixty-five Everett Street, Ward twenty-two. This is B.O.A. number forty, oh-three, thirty-eight. This is a request for the construction of a second building on the same lot. For a second building on the same lot. Violations are Article fifty-one, Section nine, lot area excessive, additional lot area insufficient, lot width, lot frontage, usable open space and side yards all insufficient, and flow area ratio excessive.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, uh-
Hold on, Mr. Bezani, may I read the building code violation for the record?
Right.
Uh, this is for sixty-one Everett Street, Ward twenty-two. This is B.O.A. number forty, oh-three, thirty-nine. This is in reference to Section seventy-seven, eighty, C.M.R. five-oh-three, Table five-oh-three, allowable height and area, and Section seven-eighty, seven-oh-five-point-eight, opening of exterior wall. Your name and address for the record, please.
Ms. Aragio, if I may, the board does not have any drawings at all. Okay, let's, let's, let's put that aside for a moment, and just clarify for us, we heard earlier when you were, would you give us your name and address since these days have been here? Okay, give us your name and address again, sir.
Tiven Yesaiyan, sixty-five Everett Street.
Okay. Concern is that we've got building code issues, which I'm going to ask the architect to address, but we don't usually allow additional buildings on the same lot. If it's two separate lots or a subdivision, that's a different matter, but I just want to let you know where we're coming from initially. That sounds like it's going to be a hurdle for you. But on the matter of building code, is that something we should be? Well, Mr. Chairman, in this member's opinion, the matter of building code is moot, because it would be such an egregious zoning violation, that, why even do it? And I don't understand why we don't have drawings, but with lack of drawing, but noting the number of violations combined with the building code violation. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion for denial. The applicant has adequate use of his property.
I'm trying to withdraw the application.
You can withdraw if you'd like. I'll go with denial without prejudice. Well, he's going to, we've got a motion for denial without prejudice, which is the same thing as withdrawal, so, kind of doing it for you. All those in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed to it? Okay, I'm sorry, but your application's been denied without prejudice. If you'd like to reapply on it with a different plan, you're welcome to.
Yeah, I'm going to, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Calling fourteen-sixty-five comma, Ward twenty-one. This is B.O.A. number thirty-nine, seventy-nine, twenty-two. This is a request to erect a new six-story, one-hundred-and-one-unit residential building. Violation, violation, excuse me, is Article twenty-nine, Section four, Green Belt Protection Overlay District. Article fifty-one, Section forty, use multi-family dwelling is forbidden. Article fifty-one, Section forty-one, F.A.R. and building height both excessive. Your name and address for the record, please.
Mary Marshall, Nutter McConan at Fish, one-fifty-five Seaport Boulevard in Boston. And with me today is Ed Bradford from the architectural team, also here on behalf of Brighton Marine Health Center, the proponent, are Marlene Scalisi and Michael Dwyer. In addition to that, as part of the development team is Wind Development, who will eventually be a joint venture partner, and our landscape architect and others. So, I just wanted to give you some context, and Ed, if you could just show the overall Brighton Marine campus, which is on the intersection of Warren Street and Commonwealth Ave in Brighton, Massachusetts. It's an eight-point-three-acre parcel as a whole. This potential development site is a one-point-five-acre parcel of the Brighton Marine campus. The Brighton Marine campus is within the Community Facilities Subdistrict, and a portion of it along Commonwealth Avenue is within the Green Belt Protection Overlay District. Let me just first address the Green Belt Protection Overlay District issues.
Can we get, please, to the housing?
Yes, absolutely.
Because we know G-Cod needs to go through the Parks Department anyway, regardless.
Yes.
So, you're proposing one-hundred-and-one units?
Yes.
For veterans' housing, from what I can gather?
It is. It's a highly affordable housing project with a preference for veterans. We're working with the, the state and local veteran service organizations to work out exactly what that means by definition, and it will be part of our fair housing marketing plan. But this is a facility, the history of Brighton Marine, it's a private nonprofit, but it was started by a disposition from the U.S. Navy, and so, as part of its mission has gone forward, at one point, the reason that it's in the Community Facilities District and under which residential use is forbidden, is because it was part of a campus subject to a restriction from the U.S. government. The restriction is no longer valid, it's expired by its own terms, and Brighton Marine, in thinking about what it wanted to do with its property, looked hard and looked at the rate of not having affordable housing for veterans, including veterans who are returning to service, and so, looked at what an appropriate location would be on their campus, looked at the adjacent residential properties on Com Ave, and have developed something, although it does not comply with the Community Facilities Subdistrict zoning, is very close in feeling and in scale to the adjacent multi-family residential development.
And can you tell us about the housing? Is it, um, single bedroom, two bedrooms?
It's a, it's a mix, and actually, we have a slide for that, if you'd like to see that.
Do you have any questions on the plans, Mr. Bezani? No, the drawings are adequate and very nice. It's a mixture of one and two bedrooms, and I think the two bedrooms are in the nine-hundred square feet.
It's intended for families.
Right. And one bedroom-
Are these all rentals? Are these all rentals?
They are, all rentals. And just in terms of the community process, we had a very engaged, impact advisory group in the Austin-Brighton community, and we have gone through, appeared before the V.A.I.A., had their support, and went and had a waiver of further review from the B.R.A. under Article eighty last Thursday, so-
All right, it sounds like it's been vetted well, and it's going to be a good use, and- One further question, my name is-
How many campuses?
It's one for one, it's a hundred and one, some below grade and some at grade.
All right, Mayor's Office, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. John Lott from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support. There has been many, many, many community meetings, and there's overwhelming support for this project. Thank you.
Alex?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Alex Chase speaking on behalf of District City Council, Mark Sciamo. We'd also like to go on record in support and echo the comments in the Mayor's Office. They have a strong community process through our neighborhood and has received strong support. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Tom McDonough from City Council at Large. Steve Murphy's office. We too would like to go on record in support and commend the developers on this project.
All right, Paul?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Paul Sullivan, City Council, Michael Flaherty would like to go on record in strong support.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Gary Webster, Office of City Council at Large. Michelle Wu would like to go on record in support.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Minor Perez representing the Carpenter Union. We'd like to go on record in support of this project. We think it's a great project for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Gary Walker, electrician, local one-on-three, would like to speak in strong support also. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. My name's Ricky O'Shea, metal worker, local seventeen. I also want to go on, I'm very in favor of this project. You know, anytime you can help the veterans is a great thing, so, thank you.
Annabelle?
Chairman, members of the board. Annabelle Gomes, president of the Brighton-Austin Improvement Association. Would like to go on record in support. This offer is a great opportunity for veterans' housing and support with a hundred percent labor. I think this is a great project.
Thank you.
Neil Conley, visiting agent for the area workers, local seven. We also support this, great cause. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to be heard on this, in favor or opposition?
Mr. Chair, I have just a question. Uh, this housing is focused at returning veterans? Is that the priority?
It's focused on honorably discharged veterans of all ages, actually, and I think there's an increasing need, obviously documented.
I'm a Vietnam veteran, and I do understand.
And my dad's a World War II veteran, so, and Korea, so, I get that, yeah, yeah.
Motion to approve with B.R.A. design review?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, you're all set.
Calling nine-eighty-one to nine-ninety-three Morton Street, Ward eighteen. This is B.O.A. number thirty-nine, sixty-one, sixty. This is a request for a two-story addition to the retail store. Violation is Article sixty, Section nine, Frankie yard insufficient. Article nine, Section one, extension of non-reforming use. Your name and address for the record, please.
Ross Forsberg, nineteen-Fiveview Avenue, Abington, Massachusetts.
Stuart Rosen, eighty-three Crescent Ave, Citman Mass.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Forsberg.
Thank you, members of the board. Chairman, Russ Forsberg once again, along with Stuart Rosen, who is the owner of Norfolk Agua. What we are looking for today, sir, would be an extension to the existing retail facility at nine-eighty-one Morton Street. Norfolk Agua's been in business since nineteen thirty-four. They got their name from where they originally located on Morton Street, I'm sorry, on Norfolk Street, and they subsequently moved to this location, which was a former supermarket in nineteen eighty-four. As their services grew, so did the store. They had additions in nineteen eighty-nine and nineteen ninety-four, and the most recent one is more or less a makeover to the existing facility. It's rather a hodgepodge of exterior materials, some painted block, some textured block. What we're proposing to do now is to create an entry vestibule, which would help or aid in the delivery of services, because right now, when the doors open, the cold wind blows in, the rain blows in, it's not pleasant for the customers or the employees.
Russell, just tell us, what is the extension, expansion going to be used for?
Oh, the expansion is going to be used for-
More of the same retail, right?
Yes, exactly, yes, sir.
That sounds great. How's the neighborhood on this?
Uh, we met with the West Southern Neighborhood Association September twenty-second. They extended their support. We do have evidence of that. If the board would care to look.
Okay, any questions, board? And, okay? Drawings are adequate, Mr. Chairman. All right, who wants to be heard on this matter in favor?
Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. My name is Fareed Desosis from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Mr. Wilson, meet at the West Southern Group Neighborhood. They're all in a strong supporter of this, of this project.
Okay, thanks. Walter?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Walter Abwhite, Council McCarthy's office. They did meet with West Southern, and they are very good neighbors, and we'd like to go on record in strong support.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Tom McDonough from City Council at Large. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Tom McDonough from City Council at large, Steve Murphy's office. We too would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Gary Webster, Office of City Council at large, Michelle Wu, like to go on record in support.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council Michael Flaherty, like to go record in support.
Anyone else to be heard on Morton Street?
Motion to approve with BRA design review?
Second. All those in favor? Aye.
Calling 65 Bedford Ave, Ward 17. This is BOA number 402569. This is a request to change the occupancy from a two to a three family dwelling. To remodel the third floor to create an additional dwelling unit. Violations are Article 65, Section 41, off street parking insufficient. Article 65, Section 8, use three family dwelling is forbidden. And Article 65, Section 9, building height excessive. Your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Joseph Feaster from the law firm of McKenzie and Associates, 183 State Street in Boston. With me are Joel Kim Antunes and his wife Deja Kerr, the owners of the property.
Yes, okay. Any questions on this before we get started?
Drawings are adequate, Mr. Chairman.
If you'd like to edify the word with Mr. Feaster?
Certainly, there, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much for the opportunity. Mr. Antunes is a Boston police officer who is looking to make this renovation, he and his wife, or who is also a probation officer in Dorchester District Court, to renovate this property in order for them to reside there. This is a condition which I'm sure the plans Mr. Bazani has, who show they have the, they have the size of the unit as well as the height of the unit is fine and within compliance with the expectations of the zoning code as well as this board. They have gone before the neighborhood and I would like to present for the record both the notice of the meeting that was held by the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services on behalf of this project, a petition that were signed by several neighbors, 265 Bedford Avenue, and also the support of an organization called Redefining Our Community Organization.
Okay, we're going from a two family to a three, is adding an apartment, is that correct?
Yes. And there's no exterior work on this as well, Mr. Shosley?
It's not an existing condition. You're actually adding living space, right?
Yes.
What is the current use of this place?
As of right now, is this just in terms, there is, there's no use of space at the present time. What's the use of the space? It's just two families. Yeah, three members. Yes, but in terms of the use of space, is that? There's nothing, there's nothing up there at the present time, Ms. Early.
Okay, great. Who wants to be heard on this matter, Fareed?
Good morning, again. We did meet at a butters meeting and all the communities on favor and support this project this morning.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, I have no progress from Council Yancy's office. Just want to go on record that we do support 65 Bedford Ave.
Thank you very much. Mr. McDonough?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Tom McDonough from City Council at large, Steve Murphy's office. We'd like to go on record in support.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Gary Webster, Office of City Council at large, Michelle Wu, like to go on record in support.
Anyone else in the room come to be heard on Bedford Street? Will just take a motion if there's already.
Mr. Chairman, motion to grant relief requested. There is no exterior work, is that correct?
There's no exterior work, Mr. Bazani.
No BRA design review?
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Great, thank you, Councilor.
All right, thank you very much.
Calling 231 Victory Road, Ward 16. This is BOA number 398033. It's a request, use of the lot for outdoor storage and parking of construction equipment to large vehicles and materials. Violations are Article 65, Section 15, use regulations. It's forbidden for this location and Article 65, Section 39, screening and buffering. Your name and address for the record, please.
Attorney Daniel McDevert, 161 Granite Avenue in Dorchester.
This is an existing use, Mr. McDevert? Is this, this an existing use we're continuing or is this a new use?
No, this is actually a kind of a continuation of a use with a new user. The property has been used for the last 14 or so years by a contractor who had a contract with the Commonwealth of Mass. Commonwealth owns the land. That contract has ended. It was an RFP. My clients were the high bidders on the RFP and they're about to sign a lease for this land with the Commonwealth. It's a five-year lease. It does have provisions for a five-year extension after that. It's in community commercial zone. It's directly behind what used to be Westminster Dodge and is now the used car lot, By Rider Used Car and so pretty close to the Toyota.
We're hearing this because it's a transfer in ownership sort of, or?
Well, there was never any use of the land before. It doesn't have an identity as far as an assessor's parcel and they had to kind of come up with an address for it of 231 Victory Road. So for them to go in now as a leaseholder, they would have to comply with zoning, whereas the prior contractor was under contract to the Commonwealth for work being performed on some sewer outflow jobs. And they, as part of that contract, were exempt from zoning because they were really operating on behalf of the Commonwealth. My clients would be paying rent for the property and therefore would have to have relief from this board in order to be there appropriately for the community.
You know, what the law takes up the Commonwealth, what is to shift from a subcontract basis to a lease basis?
Well, I think what happened was when the original lease went into effect, there was a dollar amount that went, had value to this land and there was a reduction in the contract with the Geoso contractors. And that, that contract went on for over 14 years, but it's expired.
The lease went, the rent was built into?
It was built in as a reduction of how much, so it was there. So now, the state put out an RFP because Geoso has finished on the job and should be finished on the site. So Mr. Walsh and Mr. Fasoli were the bidders on the RFP and, and because that lease hasn't been executed yet because the state can't comply with zoning, so they gave us authority to come in here to do this.
And what is the specific use proposed?
The specific use under the terms of the lease.
What are they going to be using the land for?
It's a contractor's lay down yet. Mr. Fasoli's company has all of the plowing contracts for the city of Boston for Clampoint, Port Norfark and Fields.
So this is not directed in any way to state contracts, it's just?
Not whatsoever.
It's just a plain straightforward lease with the Commonwealth.
It is. I think they saw this as excess real estate.
Is there a crushing operation taking place?
None whatsoever.
The stone gravel shown on the drawings and spoils, what's that?
This would be material, Mr. Walsh's company is in the business of emergency repair of city streets and sewer lines and things of that effect. So he would have materials there that he could access, such as steel plates and things like that, and gravel. So if he was out fixing a water leak on Dorchester Avenue at midnight, he would have a place to go get his supplies or take the excess digging material and deposit it until he could dispose of it when places that do that open for business.
One other question, simply to get to the fact that it's not a crushing operation.
No, not at all, no. And then Mr. Fasoli has a snow removal, large snow removal contracts with the city and he needs space for his equipment. He's actually fighting the storms in that neighborhood and it's more effective to have his equipment between Clampoint and Port Norfark, which is where this piece of land is.
All right, let's hear from the Mayor's Office and City Council and get this going.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Alec Benelli, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, would like to go on record in support. The applicants have met with the association on several occasions. The concern that is expressed is the long-term use and the applicants are actively working with Rep. Hunt to resolve the long-term use and how that would impact the Napontia Trail.
Okay, thank you, Alec.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Joe McEckren, City Council Frank Baker's office, would also like to go on record in support and echo the Mayor's Office sentiments.
All right, thank you.
Members of the board, Dan Hunt, I'm a state representative from Dorchester and I've been working with, with the group on the proposal and have faith that if a project for a greenway comes upon, comes in use in the next, within the term of the lease, there's provisions in there that would return the whole property as part of the future site of the Napontia Greenway project. So I'm supportive of this proposal.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Tom McDonough from City Council at large, Steve Murphy's office. We'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Let's do this.
Motion for approval with a quick BRA review for any screening and buffering that might be necessary, I'm not sure. But also that this use expire in five years.
I'll second that motion. Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, board.
Calling 57 to 59 Ranger Street, Ward 15. This is BOA number 392949. This is a request to construct three dormers, three on each side of the roof. Also to extend living space into the attic. Violations, Article 65, Section 9, FAR excessive and building height excessive. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, my name is Stuart Schreier. I'm an attorney with an office at 1005 Dorchester Avenue in Dorchester. With me is Hoy Nguyen, who is the owner of the property. His English is good, but not great, so he's brought a friend with him in case he doesn't understand something.
Yours is okay, right?
Good. Good, good is, good is, good is better than none. His, his English is better than my V in the mass.
Parking spaces, right?
No, no, this is dormers.
Sorry, papers are out of order. Go ahead.
So what we have here is a two-family house in a two-family zone. It's a 4,500 square foot lot of land. Mr. Huns family has grown. He has six children. He's living on the second floor and he wants to expand the living space into the attic. The house has an existing pitch roof on the front. In the back, it has a flat roof. He wants to extend the pitch roof another 15 feet to the back where the flat roof is and he wants to put dormers on each side because the head height is kind of low in the attic. This will increase, the existing square footage in the whole house is 2,200 square feet now, which leaves a 1,000 square foot apartment on the first floor, 1,000 square foot apartment on the second floor. His apartment after he does this addition, if you permit it, will be just about 2,000 square feet gross with the net probably closer to about 1,700 square feet.
All right, Mr. Bazani, what does this proposal look like to you?
Well, the use is reasonable, okay? What is happening is that they in fact are ending up with a second floor connected to a third floor expansion with a total of five or six bedrooms.
Six.
Six bedrooms.
That's great.
And the issue architecturally is, I think it does need a reasonable BRA design review to get it to fit into the building better.
Okay. Let me just say one thing about the neighborhood. Across the street, there are a series of three-decker homes. On this side, there are no three-decker homes. So it's, it's kind of a question of how you best design it. My client has no objection to extensive design review with the BRA and if they want to alter the design, if they, if they tell him a flat roof would work better, he would do whatever is requested to fit in. If they tell him one continuous dormer would look nicer, he's getting it.
The point is that the professionals at the BRA, I think, can enhance this project way.
And he's, he's, he's willing to accept whatever suggestions are made. He's not a great designer, but he needs the space.
And does this also mean extension into the basement?
No.
No, so the first unit has how many bedrooms?
Three bedrooms.
And the second unit has six?
It has three now and he wants to increase that to three.
Proposing three more.
The bedrooms on the second floor are kind of small. The bedrooms on the third floor will be a little larger. He has a mix of boys and girls, they can't really share bedrooms and.
I'm, I'm, I'm not sure if I missed this, but what is the current roof style? Is it flat?
Well, no, the front of the building is an A roof. The last 15 feet is a flat roof. So he would be extending the A roof all the way back another 15 feet. Essentially, he's going to pick up another 300.
So that's why I'm asking, so why is building height excessive? If it's carrying a?
Well, what's happened is it's a two and a half story zone. When you go with the full dormers, it really becomes a three-floor house. The way they, the way they cite it, but it's really because you're becoming three stories in effect.
Okay, but, but the height has not changed?
The, the apex, the apex is staying.
The ridge is constant.
That's correct.
Who'd like to be heard on this matter? Alec?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Alec Benelli, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, would like to go on record in support. There was some concern expressed by the Freeport Adams Neighborhood Association, but through the abutters meeting and with the outreach that the applicant has done, they do have demonstrated support from all their abutters.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Joe McEckren, City Council Frank Baker's office, would like to go on record in support of this project.
What else? Okay, motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, like to make a motion to grant relief requested, in this case with aggressive BRA design.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, you all set? Thank you. Thank you, members.
It is now 10:35. Any of the applicants scheduled for 10:30 requesting a withdrawal or a deferral of their cases? Mr. Morancey, the address?
Maverick Street, Mrs. Rajah.
Calling 361 Maverick Street, Ward 1. This is BOA number 392828. This is a request to erect a new three-family dwelling. Your name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is George Morancey. I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Austin. Mr. Chairman, we have had an onsite community meeting, but we are meeting with the Jeffries Point Neighborhood Association in November and out of deference to them, we have indicated that we would seek a deferral in this matter.
Okay, motion, please.
Make a motion for a deferral.
All those in favor, deferral? Aye.
We'll see you again on February 10th at 12:30.
Thank you.
The address, please?
Good morning. Address is 11-17 Bennington Street, Ward 1.
Calling 11-17 Bennington Street, Ward 1, BOA number 398066. This is a request to change occupancy from two stores, office and three apartments and retail to include a liquor store. Your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chairman, board members. My name is Jared Crisla from the Pico Law Office at 100 City Hall Plaza. On behalf of the applicant, appellant, Eulalio Martinez, on behalf of the landlord and owner of the building, we've been working with Corinne Petralia and Camille Hernandez in their respective offices. And just given the scheduling and coordinating with the neighborhood group that would like to see us at their meeting in November 18th, we would respectfully seek a deferral that allows us to continue that process.
Motion for a deferral?
Second. All those in favor? Aye.
So we'll see you on February 10th at 12:30.
Thank you very much.
Your dress, please?
BOA 399463.
Calling 7-9 Hamilton Place, Ward 3. This is BOA number 399463. This is a request to place three mobile food trucks on the rear of a private way. Your name and address for the record, please?
Attorney Nicholas Azula, McDermott, Quiltean Miller, 131 Oliver Street, 5th floor, Boston, Mass, 02110. What's that? What are we doing? Looking for a deferral. We've asked, we've been asked by the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services to wrap up a little bit more abutter outreach. So we're asking for a quick deferral if possible. We're pretty close to that.
Motion for a deferral?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Okay, what date might we have?
We're looking at December 9th at 11:30.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
The address, please?
25 Beacon Street and 6 and 7 Mount Vernon Place are three different appeals. We can handle them consecutively or concurrently at your preference.
Calling 25 Beacon Street, Ward 5. This is BOA number 402866. This is a request to add, this was the one adding a.
It's renovating an existing six-story building, converting it to six dwelling units with three opere units.
Yes, and so this, I'm also going to call 6 Mount Vernon Place, Ward 5. This is BOA number 402855. And 7 Mount Vernon Place, Ward 5, BOA number 402853. Were these the ones that had opere units attached to them?
25 Beacon Street has three proposed opere units, but 6 and 7 Mount Vernon do not. I'm here to request a deferral for all three appeals. Since filing our appeal, we've had productive discussions with an abutter and we have reached an agreement in principle over the project, but we haven't had time to memorialize it in writing. We'd like some additional time to do so and if. We'd like some additional time to do so, and if you agree, we'd like to be deferred until the twenty-fifth of November. We've had discussions with...
Hang on a second.
Sure.
Hang on a second. Just have a motion for a deferral.
Motion for a deferral?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're booking out until February, okay?
I understand.
So we will see you on February tenth at twelve-thirty.
Great, thank you.
I guess the question is, when does an opere unit become another unit?
We could just say that in February.
I will just leave that on your plate so that you are clear about...
We're aware of that, and we'll treat it in February. Thank you.
Okay, where were we?
Any other applicants scheduled at ten-thirty requesting a withdrawal or a deferral? Okay, going back to the nine-thirty cases. Calling sixty Richfield Street, Ward fifteen. This is BOA number thirty-nine thirty-five fifty-three. This is a request to legalize an existing paint area to the right of the property for parking spaces. This is for three parking spaces. Violation is Article 10, Section 1, limitation of area. This is for parking along the sideline, side property lot line. And Article 65, Section 9, dimensional regulations. This is usable open space. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Mai Fong at two oh-four Adams Street, Dorchester, Massachusetts, zero-two-one-two-two. And this application is legalize the existing pavement of the half of the sides of the building. So we revised the site plan with the landscape, then have met the abutters and neighbors, and they're really happy about that.
So that is the revised plan?
That's correct.
May we have that for signature?
And this is parking for what, residential or commercial? Just parking for residential building or a commercial building?
Resident.
Okay, thank you.
And it's a side yard or the rear yard? Where is it? Can you explain it to us?
It is a side yard.
Yeah, the proposed...
Well, actually, this is the revised plan that pushes two of the spaces all the way to the rear.
Right.
And so then in the third space on the right side of the building.
That's correct. And also the removing the existing pavement of the side yard five feet from the property line also remove the violation number one as well, Article 10, Section 1.
Very good. Flavio, yours?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Flavio De Vega, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Service. We did have an abutters meeting, and they agreed to support this project with strong B.R.A. design and review to make sure they have the buffering and the setback five feet from the property line to prevent runoff from water to the neighbor's property.
All right. Anybody else? You want to run Richfield? You've got the plans. You're all set?
I'm going to make a motion to grant relief requested with B.R.A. design review with particular attention to layout of the third unit in order to ensure maneuverability. Because there's a question, and that is, why not just move further into this rear yard? Turn the car to the left. You have them facing north and south right now, east and west. You get the two there, and then the third car might make maneuverability. That was the B.R.A.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. Mr. Bizani, are you going to keep that? Are you going to keep the site plan?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Calling six-eighty Morton Street, Ward fourteen. This is BOA number thirty-three five nineteen. This is a request to change legal occupancy to include a twenty-four-hour drive-through restaurant and delivery service. Violation is Article 60, Section 16, the use of a drive-through restaurant for twenty-four hours is forbidden. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Liz McCain. I'm the attorney for Nick Ficallus with respect to six-eighty Morton Street.
Okay, what is the business that you'll be proposing here?
Business is pizza and pickup pizza.
What's there now?
Again, this is a continued use. It's still, it's pizza.
Okay, so are you adding drive-throughs? Is that it?
No, I think it's important to note that actually we're not asking for anything new. We are asking to continue to do business as my client has done business since nineteen-eighty-six.
But since nineteen-eighty-six, he's been doing twenty-four hours without a permit?
No, he has had a permit.
For twenty-four hours?
Yes, for twenty-four hours. And we were, my client was in fact in front of the board in two thousand and six with respect to a variance for the twenty-four hour and drive-through. At that time, the board unanimously voted to grant the variance, and because of failure of my client at the time, he was not represented by council, to follow through on a written decision, the decision was rescinded. So we're here today to ask, in essence, for you to reinstate the initial decision of the board in two thousand and six.
I'm confused. Can you clarify why it's not that there was a sunset clause saying that he didn't follow through paperwork? What exactly triggered this?
So in two thousand and six, after the board unanimously decided to allow the variance, I think at that time it was required of my client to provide a written decision, and he was not, at the time that he was granted the variance, he thought that he was all set. This is my client, Nick Ficallus, and he said himself at the time.
They used to have to write their own decisions. They don't do that anymore.
They don't do that anymore, and so he was unaware that...
Okay, who wants to be heard on this matter? Fareed?
Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. We did have a abutters meeting, and we have also the B-3 police is the big abutters behind the dock and the ridges. They came out in the meeting, and they expressed their feeling they all would like to go on record in support of that project.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'd like to echo the words of the Mayor's Office. They met with the B-3 police, had a community meeting, wasn't any opposition, so would like to go on record in support.
Okay. Tom?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Tom McDonough from City Council at Large, Steve Murphy's office, would like to go on record in support.
Okay, anyone else on Morton's? Would you like to be heard in favor or in opposition?
Does the applicant own the parking lot?
Yes, that is correct.
You do?
By the sound of all this.
Oh, okay, that's okay. So I'm going to make a motion for approval with B.R.A. design review for the signage and lighting, and also for some kind of screening by the sidewalk so that, you know, pedestrian feels safe walking on that sidewalk.
Second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, you're all set, thank you.
Thank you.
You're all set, thank you.
Calling eleven oh-two to eleven oh-six Blue Hillah, Ward fourteen. This is BOA number thirty-eight eighty-seven fifty-eight. Violations are Article 60, Section 16, function slash dance hall is forbidden use. Auto repair garage is forbidden use. Article 60, Section 16, retail hardware store with a U-Haul rental place is a forbidden use. Article 60, Section 37, off-street parking insufficient for the hall, also off-street parking insufficient for the increased church capacity. This is a request to confirm occupancy as a beauty salon, church with adult daycare, and retail store. Also to change the occupancy to a church with a function hall, hardware store with a U-Haul rental, and auto repair. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Mark Kelly. I'm a friend and consultant to Joseph Judy, owner of the property. Mr. Judy purchased the property some fifteen years ago. It's an eighty-year-old building. There's actually two parts to the building, ten ninety-eight, which has a daycare and a restaurant, and those are in good stead with zoning and ISD on our recent trips there. Eleven oh-two to eleven oh-six has the current topic for today. The building had a series of confusions on the record, which we helped to correct prior to Mr. Judy buying the property. And a lot of the existing tenants predate Mr. Judy owning the property, including the hardware store. The application today is to continue with many of the functions that have preexisted Mr. Judy and to carry forward. He agrees to eliminate the auto, carry the church function forward, and there had been prior to his owning the property, functions in the hall go back to when the Kennedys were running. They actually had meetings in there in the G and G market. So today, our structural engineer has been through the building. All the fire equipment has been certified and submitted to ISD. The furniture has been changed.
Are we adding any uses or not?
Well, there was confusion. We are technically adding function hall today.
So are you...
Legalizing it.
You're adding, technically adding a function hall?
Correct.
And are you technically adding a hardware store with a U-Haul? Is that what you're adding?
Yes.
The U-Haul function?
Yes.
And you have withdrawn the auto?
Correct.
Auto. So the two uses that you are here in essence for is the church function hall and the addition of the U-Haul to the hardware store.
Correct.
So just because, question about how many U-Haul trucks are you proposing for that facility?
Mr. Judy has stated he would be willing to relocate them off property and allow the hardware store to continue renting without them being on property if that was the decision of the board and the neighborhood.
Okay, and how about the church function?
The church function, there was a neighborhood meeting. We met with the Mayor's Office and with City Councils, and the church has had occupancy in the past certificates, and it continues to function well, and it has great support. There's five hundred and another several hundreds signatures that were...
You're keeping the church. All right, I'm going to go to testimony, just to get a sense of community on this. Whose neighborhood is this, Lululela? Fareed, come up and speak to us.
Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. My name is Fareed De Sosis. I would like to go on record in support, and we did have the abutters meeting. We felt some of the confusion. It was a function hall already, but it was illegal, so you would just want to legalize that and the hardware store. Also, they just want to change occupancy. It's been out, it's been in the committee for over ninety-two, since nineteen ninety-two. So everyone came on board, and they all want to support everything.
All right, thank you.
The co-councilman, Councilor Yance's office, I'd just like to go on record in support of eleven oh-two. And eleven oh-two to eleven oh-six, Lululela, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Tom McDonough from City Council at Large, Steve Murphy's office, would like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Anyone else to be heard of Lululela?
I'm going to make a motion for approval of the church function hall and the hardware, for the church function hall, not for the hardware store with a U-Haul and no auto repair.
All right.
Okay, that's also with comprehensive design review for the entire block, eleven oh-two to eleven oh-six, for signage and for screening of the parking lot on the side street.
Okay.
Second that motion.
And as always, if there's an impasse at B.R.A. design review, you come back here.
Hardware store with no...
Okay, so it's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, you're all set for those provisions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling one Haley Street, Ward eleven. This is BOA number thirty-nine thirty-eight fifty-two. This is a request to extend living space into the basement. Violation is Article 50, Section 29, FAR excessive. Your name and address for the record, please.
We should see one Haley Street, Roxbury, Massachusetts.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. James Christopher RCA LC, business address four fifteen Napont Street, Ab, Dorchester.
Okay, and what are we doing, creating an apartment?
It's extension of living space. It's not going to be an additional apartment.
Okay. Bizani, you had a few to see what...
I have drawings or anything, Mr. Chairman?
What's the base area used for?
Living area and a bedroom.
So there's no code violations, and there will be none? Anyone want to be heard in favor?
It's approximately eight foot four.
That's nice.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Daniel Plonk on behalf of District Seven, City Councilor Tito Jackson, would like to go on record in support.
Thank you very much. Tom?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Tom McDonough from City Council at Large, Steve Murphy's office, would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Okay. Gary?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Gary Webster, Office of City Councilor at Large, Michelle Wu, would like to go on record in support.
Very good. Eric?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Eric Prentice, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services, would like to go on record in support.
All right. Anyone else to be heard on this matter? And what's the board?
Motion for approval. James, there is no exterior work, is that correct?
Correct.
Motion for approval, no B.R.A. design.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You're all set. Thank you very much.
Calling forty to forty-two Hillside Street, Ward twenty. This is BOA number thirty-nine seventy-eight thirty-four. This is a request to change the occupancy from a two to a four-family dwelling. Violation is Article 59, Section 7, multifamily dwelling use is forbidden. Article 59, Section 8, usable open space insufficient, and Article 59, Section 37, off-street parking is insufficient. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Carlos Quintero, forty dash forty-two Hillside Street.
All right, the secretary just read that you want to legalize your house as a four-family, and you're stating that it has been such, and you've got historical records, tax documents, and all that to show utilities, four utilities?
It has been existing since purchase, nineteen eighty-five. For the record, I've been paying taxes as a four, and...
How many bedrooms are in each unit?
First floor, there's one plus ten, one bedroom the other side, which that's where I'm in, and there's a four-bedroom on the second and third floor.
So I'm sorry, on the first floor is what?
One plus ten.
One plus...
One bedroom.
One bedroom?
Right.
Okay, and the second and third floor, there's four?
Four, right.
Okay, and this is one, a two-family?
It's a two-family.
Four-family.
Yeah, it might confuse some people. It's actually two different addresses, forty and dash forty-two. I'm the owner of both addresses.
So the first floor in each is one bedroom of the second floor?
Right, so it's two and two.
And what's the parking? Because the parking is insufficient.
The building actually has three spots off-street.
Okay, any other questions? Bizani, you have any concerns?
Drawings are adequate.
All right, who'd like to be heard on this matter?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Natalia Penya. I'm representing the Office of State, Jeffrey Sanchez, and we'd like to go on record in support.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else on Hillside? Okay.
Chairman, I'm going to make a motion to grant relief requested, but with a proviso that no building code relief goes along with this.
All right.
Second.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That was the quickest motion I've ever seen done in years.
Calling one ninety-seven to one ninety-nine N Street, Ward seven.
No, where is everybody?
This is BOA number thirty-nine ninety-three seventy-eight. This is a request for roof deck, for roof deck addition of five hundred and seventeen square feet, also rear deck, and extension into the basement. Violation is Article 8, Section 7, the use is forbidden. Violation is Article eight, Section seven, the use is forbidden. This is the common exercise storage room, and the basement is a convenience. Article fifteen, Section one, FAR excessive. You name an address for the record, please.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is George Marancy. I'm an attorney with a business address of three fifty West Broadway in South Boston. I represent Patrick and Sarah Mahoney, who are the owners of this property. The property is a two-family dwelling. My clients live in the second-floor unit. My clients are expecting their first child and are seeking to increase the living space in their unit by erecting a rooftop addition, which would be a master bedroom and a master bathroom going out onto a rooftop deck. The unit is currently nine hundred and ten square feet. As I say, my client's family is growing. He would like to add five hundred and seventeen square feet on the rooftop of the building, very similar to what's been done in at least four or five other properties in the immediate neighborhood. The FAR would increase from an existing one point zero three to a proposed one point three three, so there is an FAR violation. I would point out for the board that I would disagree with the refusal letter in that I do not believe that extending living space into the basement for storage and a fitness room, a home gym, is actually a forbidden use under the code. I'm not quite sure why that was cited. I believe that the only violation that we have, in fact, is an FAR violation.
All right, thank you, Mr. Marancy. Do you think that that's the only violation, Mr. Kazani?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm in agreement.
Plan's okay then?
Yeah, drawings are adequate.
All right, thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Eric Prentice, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services, would like to go on record in support.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm John Allison from City Councilor Bill Linnahan's office, and we'd like to go on record in support.
Thank you very much. Tom?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Tom McDonough from City Council at large, Steve Murphy's office, like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Paul Sullivan from City Council, Michael Flaherty, like to go on record in support for the proponent. A proponent who has lived in, on N Street for sixteen-plus years, who's been specifically engaged with the community, and based upon conversations with the counselor himself, intends to stay on N Street after increasing the living space for his young family. We would just urge the proponent at this particular point to reach out to all neighbors and the bidders to be a good neighbor during construction, as there are for all those reasons that we are in support.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else to be heard on this, in favor or opposition? What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion for approval with P.R.A. design view.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You're all set, counselor? Thank you.
Calling the board final arbiter case, ninety-eight East Brookline Street, Ward eight. This is BZC number thirty-two, twenty-two, fifty-six. For the record, this particular case was heard on January twenty-second, twenty thirteen. It was a request to erect a rear deck and spiral staircase. At that time, it was approved with an understanding that decks must be bracket supported. On April eighteen, twenty thirteen, the applicant's attorney came before this board requesting that the, that the deck should not be cantilevered, cantilevered but from the rear wall. On the, on May seventeen, twenty thirteen, the board member sitting for this appeal voted to deny the request to remove the proviso. You're name an address for the, for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and the board. My name is Stacy M. Cannon, ninety-eight East Brookline Street in Boston.
What are you here requesting today?
I'm here for final arbiter of a minor modification to the deck.
All right, are you familiar with the minor modification being requested, Mr. Kazani?
Yes. Basically, they have retained the services of Carmen Guaranchino, Rome Guaranchino as the engineer, and the ERA Design Review shows a diagonal bracket.
Correct.
An extended bracket, a large bracket, but still a diagonal bracket. And I'm slightly, well, I'm not confused. There is one post down, but that, in fact, is for the stair.
May I explain?
Yes.
Okay. So we have put the brackets on for the structural element that you requested, which was absolutely fine. It worked out. What the, what Carmine saw was that with two large beams coming to closure at the stairway, that it would, it would be against zoning for the height, because the two beams would be too hot. So he believed that the structural element that would make sense would be the post.
Right. I mean, basically what he's done is he's taken a spiral stair that would normally have one post only, and to strengthen it, he has put a post at the edge of the landing of the same spiral stair.
Correct.
So that it is in line with the spiral stairs. The deck itself is primarily supported by the diagonal brackets, which we have requested.
Correct.
Make a motion to grant the relief requested.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're all set.
Thank you very much.
I think we're going to take a five-minute recess. Can we, our digital friends in the back, we're gonna take a five-minute break, just to catch our breath. So we'll be back with the ten-thirty hearings in about five minutes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna start again and uh we have new faces in the room. Just to remind you, we will uh we already asked for deferrals, okay. Um we do take testimony, we will be asking for testimony, we do need to manage it because we have a lot of cases in front of us. So we always ask you to stay on on point with the zoning and try to give us unique uh input on the cases so it helps us to make a decision. We hear each case on its own merit and we do make a decision today. You are being taped, recorded and on a lot on TV, I'm not sure it's live TV, but it's live TV. Uh and just keep that in mind so we can get everybody on the record, okay? Thank you very much for coming.
We did ask earlier, but any applicant scheduled for 10:30 requesting a withdrawal or a deferral of their cases. Okay, calling 52 Harrahford Street, Ward 5. This is BOA number 399339. This is a request to remove the provisor for the takeout granted to this petitioner only. Violation is Article 6, Section 4, other protections, other protectional conditions. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. My name is Makunda Feldman and my address is 260 Loudville Road in Eastampton, Massachusetts.
Okay, and we're here for a food takeout license?
Yes.
Is the restaurant changing names or formats?
It is. I'm one of the owners of Barrington Coffee.
Barrington?
Barrington Coffee, here with Greg Charbonneau, one of the other owners.
Okay.
And we're seeking to open a coffee shop in what was a former frozen yogurt uh location, also serving coffee on Newberry Street.
Okay, so it's third generation coffee shop.
It, yes, it was um it was a yogurt shop with a takeout coffee business. They had relief thirty six.
Have you operated a restaurant in Boston before?
We do. We currently have a coffee shop at 346 Congress Street in Port Point.
You know the rules and regs about selling food to go, right?
Correct.
Very good. Um anyone want to be heard in favor on Harrahford Street? Ms. Meinzler calling? Go ahead, go ahead, we'll take.
I'm here in in favor of this. We love to see new brands moving into the neighborhood and so we're very much in support of this.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Mahona Siddiq, on behalf of Counselor Josh Sakim, would like to go on record in support.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of board, Tom McDonough from City Council at Large, Steve Murphy's office, like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of board, Henry Cohen, on behalf of City Council, Michelle Wu, like to go on record in support.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Kyra Fox, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, would like to go on record of support.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Is this the old um Chinese restaurant or what is, what, what, what was it before?
Steve's?
Is it Steve's?
No, it's directly across the street from Steve's. It was called Berry Line.
Yes, okay.
Oh, I wasn't there long.
They were not there long.
Well, I hope Garrington Coffee's there very long.
Thank you.
Uh we need a motion with the regular takeout, with the board's usual takeout language to this applicant only.
Second.
Signage? Okay, very good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, good luck.
Thank you so much.
Calling. Calling 294 Columbus Ave, Ward 4. This is BOA number 397257. The applicant here for Columbus Ave. This is a request to change the occupancy from a four, from a two to a four-family dwelling with two, with a two-story vertical addition. Violation is Article 64, Section 34, Restricted Roof Structure Regulations and Article 64, Section 36, Off-Street Parking Insufficient. Your name and address for the record.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, honorable members. For the record, my name's Attorney Jack P. Milgram. I'm with the Law Offices of Jack P. Milgram. Our office address is number one Billings Road in Quincy, Massachusetts. The zip code is 02171. To my immediate right is Fong Vu, who's the applicant for this application. To my left is Mr. Brian Lau, who's involved in preparing the architectural plans. To the right of Ms. Vu is Mr. Stephen Sawyer, who's an engineer.
Okay, before you get started, change occupancy to a two-family or four with an addition. I want to ask the uh our architect if he's seen the plans and is approving.
Drums are adequate, Mr. Chairman.
I have a couple of questions. The violations are related to roof structure regulations. Are you providing a roof deck up there? What, what is triggering that?
Uh the best of my knowledge was triggering that is the raising of the roof. I'm not aware of anything on the roof.
And then the off-street parking is sufficient, is insufficient? What are you providing and what's required?
What I believe is required would be two spaces. It's going from a two to a four. To my understanding, the zoning code that the original units don't count in regards to um the addition, so.
You're providing two spaces.
We're, we're seeking a variance for the two spaces. It's all, the building's presence is non-conforming. There's no, there's no parking with the building.
You're providing no spaces.
That's correct.
And how, what's the size of the units?
Square footage, square footage. Quarly eleven hundred square feet for each unit.
And how many bedrooms?
Two bedrooms. Two bedrooms for each floor.
And the building will be fully sprinkled?
It will be. It currently is not, it will be.
Okay, who wants to be heard on Columbus? Jordan?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Jordan DC from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support. Um they have letters from Butters that are in support and the Neighborhood Association does support it. Uh we were unable to have a formal Butters meeting, so there's a little bit of concern there, but because it matches the rest of the neighborhood, we feel that this is an appropriate project.
All right, thank you. Chris?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Kristen Ammon, behalf of City Council President Bill Lenihan. We'd like to go on record in opposition at this time. Um according to our South End liaison, there has not been a Butters meeting. There was no community outreach and nobody reached out to our office.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else to be heard on Columbus? What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
There is. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
This has VRA design review, correct?
Uh something over here.
Is it rear?
I'm sorry.
Calling 103 to 111, Arch Street, Ward 3. This is BOA number 410208. This is a request to change the occupancy from 18 residential units, one commercial space, to 21 residential units and one commercial space. Violation is Article 13, Section 1, Open Space Insufficient. There is also a companion case. This is 630 to 636 Washington Street, Ward 3. This is BOA number forty, 345698. This is a request to change the occupancy from retail stores, restaurant and office to um retail stores, restaurant and 31 residential units. Violation is Article 23, Section 1, Off-Street Parking is Insufficient. Article 37, Section 4, G-Cott Applicability and Article 43, Section 19, Use Regulations, Residential Conversion is Conditional. Your name and address for the record, please.
If I may, Anthony Rossi, 75, Williams Street.
James Christopher, CALC, business address 415 in Ponte D'Amont, Georgia.
Okay, so you're, am I correct, subdividing some units to make the additional units?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Do you have a plan for what they, well, we all have a plan for what they want to do, but you, have you seen the plans?
Uh we, we have, we have, the drawings are adequate. Again, the building is sprinkled, is that correct? Correct.
So that on Arch Street, it looks like you're adding an additional unit? And then on Washington Street, you're converting from offices to 31 units?
If I may, on, on Arch Street, uh there were already those units that were bringing back to studios, were already existing studios that we made two bedrooms, three of them. So we're actually putting a wall in the middle, but they already have kitchens and bathrooms in them. We tried to make three of the units, two bedrooms, and we permitted the building. So now we're trying to bring it back to the, to the original, all studios in the building.
That's how many units? Three units, was it three?
It's three, it's three two-bedrooms that I'm converting back into six studios.
Okay, and then the Washington Street from offices to 31 units?
If I may, this actually always, already was before the board. I think the board already approved Washington Street. We had to uh table it. That got approved and the portion was for groundwater, that we had to go get groundwater approval and then the permit was going to be issued. What happened is we went back to groundwater and we could not put injection pump with it. It's a registry of motor vehicles building because it's hollow sidewalks. So we went back to groundwater and they requested we file a variance and for, we're looking for the variance portion of it to be approved. And I believe someone from groundwater is here and we went through the process with them for the variance on Washington Street.
So essentially, you're here for the groundwater?
Correct. And I believe that's right. And if I may reflect too, is that um it was corrected by Derek, it was a small last time we were here, that it's, it's retail, office, um commercial for the, for the building and 31 residential because Bank of America is going on the first two floors. So there's discrepancy whether they're considered retail or office.
The construction has started on this already?
Demolition has started, correct.
Okay, groundwater. Christian?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We've met with the applicant and they've adequately stated their case for variance in this location and we support it.
Okay, thank you. Kyra?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Kyra Fox, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, would like to go on record of support.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, minor parents from the carpenter's union would like to go on record in support.
Gary?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Gary Walker, electrician, local 103, would like to offer my support also. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? If not, what's the pleasure of the board? Motion for approval.
Um so, so the question is, so you are going ahead with the request for a variance 'cause can you, can you recharge in any way? No, because of the subway?
Because of the subway and it's, it's hollow sidewalks.
Right, so, so we will grant the variance?
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, on the motion, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, you're all set.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Calling 50 White Street, Ward 3. This is BOA number 384199. This is a request for rear balconies. Violation is Article 64, Section 9, Townhouse Rowing House Extension Into the Rear Yard. Your name and address for the record, please.
John Moran, Alpine Advisory Services, Alpine Way, Boston, Mass. Joining me is Louis LeDong, representing the Development LLC. Mr. Chairman, we're here today seeking a conditional use permit to construct two rear decks which project six feet into the rear yard and will be supported by brackets. The design conforms to the guidelines suggested by the VRA. Uh we have also submitted a petition of signed by 42 neighbors supporting the project. At the community meeting organized by the Mayor's Office, there was unanimous support for the proposal. The two decks will service and provide open space to the two proposed units in a substantial reconstruction building.
Okay, any questions? Mr. Bizani on their scheme?
Drums are adequate.
Anyone want to be heard in favor? Dwight Street, Ward?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Jordan DC from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, would like to go on record in support.
Uh Mr. Chairman, members of the board, John Allison from City Council, Bill Lenihan's office, we'd like to offer our support as well.
All right, thank you. Anyone else on Dwight Street? Tom?
Mr. Chairman, members of board, Tom McDonough from City Council at Large, Steve Murphy's office, like to go on record.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Motion for approval, VRA design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, all set, thank you.
Calling 219 to 222 Main Street, Ward 2. This is BOA number 397135. This is a request to construct a new roof deck. Violation is Article 62, Section 25, Roof Structure Restrictions. Your name and address for the record.
My name is Stephen Pettipass. I'm the architect of Project Static Images.
Charles McClucci, 223 Main Street, Unit Number 4, Charlestown.
Julia McClucci, 223 Main Street.
Very good. Have you seen this?
I have, Mr. Chairman. Drums are adequate.
Okay, anyone want to be heard in favor on 219 Main Street?
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Tom McKay, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, would like to go on record in support. Um we held in the Butters meeting, all those that showed up were in support, so.
Thank you very much. Judy?
Floyd, we had a city council cell, I'm a student, so I'm ready to support.
Okay, anyone else on Main Street? What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion for approval, VRA design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, you're all set.
Thank you very much.
It is now 11:35. Any of the applicants scheduled for 11:30 requesting a withdrawal or a deferral of their cases? Mr. Moran, see the address?
38 dash 42 Hyde Park Avenue, Mizracho.
Calling 38 to 42 Hyde Park Ave, Ward 19. This is BZC number 33450. This is a request to demolish the existing structure and erect a four-story building for nine residential units and retail space. Your name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is George Moran. See, I'm an attorney with a business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. Uh Mr. Chairman, members, this matter, we're requesting a deferral. My clients have made representations to the elected officials and to the community that they would request a deferral in this matter while they resolve other issues unrelated to the project in the Jamaica Plain and Roxbury neighborhoods.
Okay, motion for deferral.
Second.
Okay, let's defer this. All those in favor?
Aye.
And to what date, Mizracho?
Looking February 10th at 12:30.
Thank you.
Address, please.
Good morning, 46 Gardner Street.
Calling 46 Gardner Street, Ward 21. This is BZC number 33463. This is a request to reconfigure the interior layout of the building and revise access to the basement. Um your name and address for the record, please.
Don Wees with the Dane Torpey Firm, 745 the Lansky Avenue. We moved to withdraw this morning. The project required a relatively small amount of zoning relief and for equivalent time and effort, we can bring in zoning compliance and hopefully make it a more attractive building and lot.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Get dressed, please.
150 West Broadway, South Boston.
Calling 150 West Broadway, Ward 6. This is BZC number 33472. This is a request to demolish the existing structure, combine lots and erect a six-story building for 39 residential units, three restaurants, two retail spaces. three restaurants, two retail spaces, and parking for thirty-two vehicles. Your name and address for the record, please.
Joe Hassel, ten Post Office Square, eighth floor, Boston, Massachusetts. Uh, good morning, Chairman and members of the board. Uh, we're requesting a deferral, um, to, uh, for ongoing community and as well as, um, Article eighty, a few technical issues to be, that we hope to have worked out, um, in the next couple of weeks.
All right, is there a motion for deferral?
Make, make a motion for deferral.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
We're looking at December ninth at, um, eleven-thirty.
Okay, thank you.
Address, please?
Uh, twenty-two twenty-six Plainfield Street in Jamaica Plain.
Calling twenty-two to twenty-six Plainfield Street Ward Eleven. This is BZC number thirty-three two thirty-eight. This is a request to, um, erect three townhouses. Your name and address for the record, please.
Svetlana Mogilevsky.
And what do you like to do, withdraw or defer?
Defer, please.
Because, do you need any process?
Um, it's quite a deferral today, they're, they're doing some ongoing, um, discussions. Uh, this is called the land project. Um, the community group is, um, bringing attraction and the owners and applicants are very, um, open to meeting with the neighbors and they're going to be continuing their discussions. Um, there was a meeting last night concerning the land group and at the time they had requested, um, deferral to be able to be more honest.
Okay. All right, uh, motion, please.
Motion to defer.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Uh, the, we will hear this again on... Julianne?
Yeah?
We will hear this again on February tenth at twelve-thirty. Just know that you're getting on to a year since you initially filed the application, so we need to bring closure to this, okay? Any other applicants scheduled for eleven-thirty requesting, requesting a withdrawal or a deferral? Okay, um, calling fifty-three Chelsea Street Ward One. This is B.O.A. number thirty-seven eighty-five oh seven. This is a request to remove the exterior fire escapes and to create an interior, internal second means of egress. Violations are Article fifty-three, Section nine, F.A.R. excessive, usable open space insufficient, front yard insufficient for the way, for the bay window, projection over the property line, side and rear yards also insufficient. Also fifty-one Chelsea Street Ward One, B.O.A. number thirty-seven eighty-four eighty. This is a request to extend living space into the basement. Violation is Article fifty-three, Section nine, F.A.R. excessive, and also Article fifty-three, Section twelve, rear yard insufficient. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, I'm the Chairman, members of the board, Richard Lynn. On behalf of Chelsea Development Partners, with me is Phil Varesco, Varesco Assistant Architect. Um, with respect to these two properties, as the board may recall, back in October two thousand and eleven, uh, this block basically was destroyed by a building collapse. Uh, this is the, this, these are the last two in a series of eight buildings that are being reconstructed. Six of those buildings have already been reconstructed, uh, they're now occupied, and the final two are under construction now. All of these buildings have been built pursuant to the Commissioner's Bulletin for condemned buildings. Uh, in order to address some of the design issues and some of the updated features to the building, uh, we do obviously require relief for any variations from the original structure that existed and permitted under the Commissioner's Bulletin. Uh, the proposal for fifty-three Chelsea would remove the exterior fire escape and allow internal means of egress and stairwell. Uh, we did, uh, one of the issues indicated was that the projection would go over the property line. Uh, we've been in contact with the Public Improvement Commission as well as I.S.D. Uh, with respect to the projections. Uh, my understanding is I.S.D. and, uh, P.I.C. have, uh, come up with an exempt projections provision for these types of projects, provided they were within a certain, uh, distance from the property line. Uh, they do not require full P.I.C. process, it would simply be approval by I.S.D. Uh, this has had the benefit of ongoing the area designer view, uh, with respect to all the buildings that have been reconstructed, uh, and replaced for this particular block. When this is completed, a total of forty-one housing units will be restored around the Chelsea Street block, uh, after the collapse. I'm happy to answer any questions from the board. Uh, just by way of community process, we did have, uh, an original Butters meeting where we presented the entire plan, uh, that we instructed that would be phased. Uh, the first six buildings would be completed, the final two buildings, uh, would be done at a later date. Uh, the community had essentially no concerns, and the issues that were raised, uh, I think we had to go to address.
Okay. Uh, just for clarification, the only real issue on fifty-three is what, just the bay projection?
Yes, that and the, you know, uh, removing the fire escape and moving the, enclosing what would have been the fire escape by moving the wall back.
Okay. And you have an access from fifty-three to fifty-one that gives access to that fire escape, is that correct?
There's no fire escapes, they're eliminated. We have means of egress within the buildings, both of them. So we're covered. It's, it's a modern building.
To the means of egress.
To means of egress, modern, modernly handled.
And then the other, uh, issue is the means of access from fifty-three to fifty-one for the mechanical, is that correct?
Correct.
Correct. Okay. Okay, any other questions?
Now, what is this V.R.A. recommendation? Um, I guess your question probably boils down to the, uh, living space into the basi, in the basement? Everything is going to be up to code, since this is new construction?
Oh, that's right, yeah. Uh, part of the design feature for replacement for fifty-one Chelsea, uh, in order to keep it in line with the remainder of the block, was to raise the building up a bit and create, uh, sort of some space in the basement. It was clearly underutilized, uh, it's just a store of space, so, and that was one of the proposals to move, uh, additional living space in the basement.
Uh, well, it is simply an extension of units, uh, one oh one, one oh two, is that correct? In the basement, there is not a separate dwelling unit, it's a extension or a possession. Or what, what the plan for fifty-one?
On fifty-one, it's an extension, yes.
And on fifty-three, it's an additional unit in the basement?
Yes, it is.
There is a basement, how large is that unit?
Um, four hundred and fifty square feet.
Basement unit.
Basement unit, four hundred and fifty square feet around that.
Any other questions? Who wants to be heard in favor on this matter, Chelsea's, Corinne?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Corinne Petralia, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, we'd like to go on record and support. As the council stated, this is part of an ongoing renovation of a series of buildings that had collapsed in the neighborhood, so, like to support it.
Thank you.
We have the other city council cell, we would like to see your support, we would like to see your support as well.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Tom McDonough from City Council at Lodge, Steve Murphy's office, would like to go on record and support.
Very good, anyone else? Seeing no one else, what's the pleasure of the board?
Motion for approval with V.R.A. has assigned you.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You're all set, gentlemen, thank you.
Calling, um, forty-four Brooks Street Ward One. This is B.O.A. number thirty-nine thirty-three thirty-five. This is a request for off-street parking of two vehicles. Violation is Article nine, Section, um, one, extension of non-conforming use. The store is a non-conforming use. Article ten, Section one, limitation of parking area. And Article fifty-three, Section fifty-six, off-street parking. This is access, drive, and maneuverability. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Nicholas Portillo, forty-four Brooks Street, East Boston.
Okay, thank you. Uh, has anyone seen a plan for where the parking is proposed? Uh, I, I have, Mr. Chairman, I have reviewed it. And the issue is that the parking drive is scheduled to be eight foot five rather than ten foot wide. Uh, now, what that means is that technically you get two seven-foot wide cars in there.
And is there parking on that side of the street?
I'm sorry?
Is there parking on that side of the street?
On, on the, on the street?
Yeah.
Um, are there spaces in front where you're going to have a curb cut?
Well, yeah, it's not.
So you're taking the space off the street?
Uh, I already had a corner for the curb cut.
Right, I know, that's, I don't know why that happened.
And, yeah.
Yes, enough is safe.
Are you also proposing to ex, make your store bigger?
No, just for the driver, because, um, they already sliced the time install in my truck, in my car over there, so if you have a driveway, then I have it.
All right, so these are spaces for the store, right? They're not for public parking?
No, just for the store, for myself, because I live in the top floor too.
Okay, all right. All right, we'll come back to that. Anyone want to be heard in favor on Brooks? No? Anyone opposed would like to be heard? Mayor's office?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Corinne Petralia, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. While we're not opposed to it, we would like the, um, applicant to come meet with his neighbors and explain to them that they're going to be having a curb cut put in on the street because at this point, I'm not sure anybody's aware that a parking spot will be taken away.
And is this the, um, the accessway between the two buildings? Is that where it's proposed?
I believe so. Um, it's kind of just an alleyway between.
Yes, exactly, so. So is there enough room to even open a corridor?
I'm, it's very narrow to me, but.
I don't know, I don't know. They, they want him to go to the neighborhood, Judy?
I guess.
Yep.
So the deferral would take you there.
Okay. So it's up to the board, do you defer or deny?
Motion to defer.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So, deferring this matter?
They're deferring this matter again to February tenth at, um, twelve-thirty.
Thank you. Do you please work with Council Lamatina's office to get neighborhood meeting together?
Could I ask one question? How is it that you actually were able to get a curb cut? Do you have a curb cut?
Yeah, it's the second time this has happened. Last week too. Before they, it used to be they had to come here, get zoning, and then get a curb cut. Now it's.
Still, it's like an eight-foot curb.
I mean, as far as I understand, it's still the way.
That's right.
There's been no change in, in that box, is that correct?
It was changed, it was changed basically last February to flip the process because people would then say, they learned they got their zoning and they couldn't get the curb cut for maybe an obstruction in the street. Um, we've recently made it so that they're parallel as of just, um, probably last week. So people can pursue both avenues and hopefully people coming before you will have the advice of D.P.W. whether it's likely they'll get the curb cut so that you guys can make the decision on the zoning.
All right, right.
I mean, we don't mean to second-guess D.P.W., but, um, you know, this one looks particularly small. Particularly small accessway curb cut, but.
But isn't one of the problems that this is a very public forum zone? And there's full neighborhood involvement with this process. Is it the same with D.P.W.? I think it's a little different.
So it's my understanding when they changed the curb cut process that the mayor's office also had a very, um, engaged, um, role in that process. So I think they felt that the community would be heard if they flipped it, and that may have not, um, been true in all the cases. So I think now we're going to do it the way essentially we originally did, which is you come for your zoning variances first. However, people should be engaging public works to see if there's any reason right up front that they don't get it.
Right, well, the parallel to that is the Boston Water and Sewer, where you can have a project that requires both zoning and Boston Water and Sewer. And you're advised to run those absolute parallels so that the signatures are simultaneous.
Good model.
Okay, you're all set, move to the next case.
Calling fifty-four Princeton Street Ward One. This is B.O.A. number four forty thirteen ninety. This is a request to renovate the existing two-family dwelling, erect an addition, and erect an addition. Violation is Article nine, Section one, extension, reconstruction, and extension of non-performing building. The extension of a semi-attached building is conditional. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Richard Lynn, twelve sixteen Bennetson Street. Uh, on behalf of, uh, Ocean City Development LLC, um, this is a very simple request. Uh, the proposal is to, to a complete renovation of existing two-family attached structure. Um, because the zoning code does not permit semi-attached two-family dwellings in this sub-district, uh, the, any extension or modification of that requires at least a conditional use permit, if not Article nine. I would point out that, uh, all of the additions or anything that we're proposing to this structure will be in complete compliance with Article fifty-three. Uh, and there will be actually more parking that is necessary for this project when it's completed, uh, which is intended to be a condominium project for the neighborhood. We appeared before the Eagle Hill Civic Association, received unanimous support for this proposal. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Councilor. Any questions?
One of the obvious questions is that this is a match-built, divided down the center. The unit on, the units on the left have front yard parking. Is that in fact?
I, I, we don't own.
No, no, I, 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 I understand.
One of the things that we have agreed, uh, through the chair, Mr. Bizani, is, uh, we've spoken with the neighbor on the left-hand side. Uh, as part of our rehabilitation of the front of that building, we're actually going to match the building so that it actually has an appearance that it's looking like one building as opposed to two.
Right, that, that was only half of my query.
I, I.
The other half was whether or not we'd actually legalized front yard parking, I don't recall.
But, we, yeah, that, that is a separate address, so we're not before, before the board on that, so.
Thank you.
Um, the, the V.R.A. provi, um, recommends approval with a proviso that there would be no future independent dwelling unit in the basement as, uh, it seems to have its own, um, two bathroom, um, is there, is a, um, bathrooms in the basement? Is there a kitchen in the basement?
I, I think the proposed, uh, use is two, is going to be continued as a two-family. As I indicated, this is a condo project, um, condo plans will show only two units. Uh, we're not interested in having anything more than two units.
Okay, very good, and what's to be heard on this matter, Corinne?
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, Corinne Petralia, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record and support. The project went before the Eagle Hill Civic Association and gained unanimous support. Um, Eagle Hill is in need of a lot of, uh, beautification and we think this will really help do that in the neighborhood.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Tom McDonough from City Council at Lodge, Steve Murphy's office, would like to go on record and support. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Henry Cohen, on behalf of City Council, Michelle Wu, would like to go on record and support.
All right, anyone else? That's it, what's the pleasure of the board?
Motion for approval, V.R.A. has assigned you.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You're all set?
Thank you.
We will call once more for eleven-thirties, anybody requesting a withdrawal or a deferral of their cases? Calling, um, forty-seven to forty-nine Rowley Road, Ward eighteen. This is BZC number thirty-three four thirty-four. This is a request to extend living space into the garage. Violation is Article nine, Section one, extension of non-performing use is conditional. Article sixty-eight, Section thirty-three, off-street parking is insufficient. And Article sixty-eight, Section eight, F.A.R. excessive. There is a companion case, this is also in reference to forty-seven to forty-nine. This is a building code violation, number fifty-four oh five. This is in reference to Section IRC, Section R three-ten, emergency escape and rescue openings, and Section IRC R three-oh-five, ceiling heights. Your name and address for the record, please. Your name and address for the record, please.
Daris Lubiar. 47 to 49 Rowley Road in High Park.
Alright, what about the...what's the building code situation, Mr. Bizani?
There is... Lack of adequate means of egress for below-grade units. You need windows that are 24 by 20. What are the sizes of your windows? You don't know?
But I have the ceiling height, which is 7.5.
Seven foot, six inches or seven...
Seven five.
Seven five. Does this say one or two family?
It's two family.
Okay, two family.
Yes.
Why was...why would you defer the last one?
But I was asked to get the ceiling height of the basement, of the first floor where I have the room. This is just to extend a living space, a room downstairs. And the picture is this...
Okay, so the total size of this unit is 1,020 square feet, is that correct? It's 510 square feet on the first floor?
Yes.
And then, uh... There is space on... Is it on the second and third or first and second?
Say it again?
Going into the garage.
The garage is underneath, just a room under the garage, under the house.
He's going down into the garage.
Yeah.
This is an ad-grade garage. It looks like they're trying to convert the garage into...it looks like it might be a, um... A playroom? Is that what it's proposed? And in the rear, a laundry room. And so the parking would essentially end up being a parking in the front yard. Here is a photo of the proposal.
I think there's a photo, I think.
It's an existing...it sounds like it's...
As far as today.
So it's already done, the work is done.
It's already built.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion relative to the building code relief. I mean, it basically is a single...single unit. Even if it's a one and two, you can allow and have a ceiling height of less than seven foot six.
Okay.
And since it's already existing, it wouldn't be punitive to do anything else. The issue relative to the escape and rescue opening, I am going to make a motion to deny. That falls right into life safety and I don't think the board wants to be in a position of compromising life safety. So you have to find a way to make that work.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any in favor?
Aye.
That a building code's been denied, where does that leave the rest of the project?
Well, I would go forth with a recommendation for approval for the zoning, okay? Depending on adequate resolution of the egress and escape issue in the bedrooms. We granted you the building, the ceiling height.
Sitting.
We have granted you relief of the ceiling height.
Yes.
Came in and has mentioned that it's seven foot five, that's adequate. But we will not grant you relief for the building code because that is emergency egress from bedrooms.
There is.
Well, not...
It's still...
Not in accordance with the documents that you've submitted.
Okay, so let's just...since it probably isn't going to fly without the building code piece, without the egress piece...
You know, that...I don't believe that to be the case, Mr. Chairman. I believe that the building code can be addressed as a design issue.
Okay.
The openings can be enlarged and inadequate means of egress can be provided, but not as shown.
Okay, well, let's...I didn't take testimony yet. Does anyone wants to be heard on this matter? Uh, Rowley Road? No one? Okay, well then, let's just make a motion. The work's already done. They had adequate use of the property before this. Questionable how they're going to resolve it, so I'll just wait for a motion, see if there's a...
A motion to grant the zoning relief requested with proviso that no building code relief be granted other than the ceiling height, okay?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Voted with those provisos? Any opposed?
I'm opposed.
You're all set, thank you for coming.
Calling 304 to 304 Aeneponza Ave, Ward 16. This is BZC number 33378.
Mr. Chairman, left of record show that I've accused myself from this case, okay?
This is a request to change the legal occupancy from a two-family dwelling to a six-family dwelling, to erect a single-story addition and a vertical addition, and to renovate. Violations are Article 65, Section 8, the proposed six dwellings units are forbidden. Article 65, Section 9, insufficient lot size for six dwelling units. FAR and building height are excessive. Insufficient usable open space, insufficient front and insufficient side yard. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is George Marancy. I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 East Fifth Street. Uh, that's not it, 350 East Broadway in South Boston. Mr. Chairman, procedurally, we have deferred in this matter in order to go before the Pope's... For the Pope's Hill Neighborhood Association, we have done so. Pope's Hill voted against the originally proposed six-unit scheme. I've submitted revised plans to the board depicting a five-unit proposal for this property. Mr. Chairman, my client has owned this property for several years. It is currently a two-family dwelling on a 4,935 square foot lot in a 2F 5,000 zoning district. The building is somewhat distressed. My client is in the process and would like to continue to dramatically improve the property. There are some serious issues with the foundation in addition to just general issues interior and exterior where systems have to be upgraded and the property has to be brought up to grade. The two units are currently four-bedroom units, so there are eight bedrooms in the property in the two units. This does not lend itself to this property being a particularly stable property. My client is therefore seeking to increase the number of units to five as the amended plans submitted today reflect. This would result in an increase, however, of only one bedroom. This would go from an eight-bedroom building to a nine-bedroom building. The...there would be six off-street parking spaces provided in terms of zoning relief being sought, as I said, in terms of the minimum lot size. This is 65 square feet under the minimum lot size in this district. Plus, of course, it would need to be larger for the additional dwelling units. This is a building on the corner of Neponset Avenue and Tolman Street, which actually more closely relates to Neponset Avenue than the two-family district in the rear as one would go up Tolman Street. We meet the requirements for a minimum lot width and frontage. The FAR of the revised plans would be a total of .98. The building height would be three stories. The third story would be less than a half-story, that's a one-bedroom unit. The absolute building height in the district is 35 feet but two and a half stories, so we do have a violation attributable to story height but not to vertical feet. There is a violation for minimum usable open space, however, there would be some good quality open space provided on the decks, balconies, or patios that are pertinent to each unit. There are violations owing to minimum front yard, side yard violations. These are existing conditions. The footprint of the building is not changing. This is essentially a modal front yard on Neponset Ave and there's an existing two-foot side setback on the Tolman Street side of the property. Again, it's not being changed. There would be six off-street parking spaces provided for the five units. I also have signatures from 14 neighbors in support of the application, including all abutters but one. One abutter across Tolman Street is not necessarily, to my knowledge, in opposition, but my client was unable to reach that property owner. But all other directed abutters have signed a petition in support of the project and they actually signed it in support of the original six-unit proposal, not the five-units. So again, we are seeking to go from two units to five units. Bedroom count is only going from currently eight to four-bedroom units, which doesn't lend itself to being a stable property, to nine bedrooms in total for the five proposed units in a building that rises only 32 feet tall.
Okay, thank you.
And then you have a roof deck?
Yes, there would be...the original plans, Ms. Aragio, had a full third story and in order to bring the massing off in Neponset Ave, a little bit more in conformity with two-and-a-half-story dwellings in the area, and of course, to reduce the unit count and increase the parking ratio, the top floor was converted to simply a one-bedroom unit with a walkout deck.
And parking, it looks like you have six standard parking spaces?
Yes, six standard parking spaces arranged around the perimeter of the building. There are two existing curb cuts. There is an existing curb cut on Neponset, there is an existing curb cut on Tolman, so the off-street parking does not result in the loss of any public on-street parking.
Any other questions from the board? If not, I'll ask if anyone wants to be heard in favor. Alec?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Alec Benelli, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, would like to go on record in opposition. In regards to the parking, there is concern expressed by the Neighborhood Association. Parking is already an issue as it is with the building right now. There's serious concern of six spots are available with the size of the building on the plot on the property. As far as abutters support, I can't verify that. I did have an abutters meeting and not one abutter showed up in support, so the support that they have right now, I just simply can't verify that the association was adamantly opposed to their presentation on several occasions.
Right, thank you. Anyone else on this matter?
I'd just point out for the record, the abutters meeting that we had, there were also...nobody showed up in opposition. I feel it incumbent to point that out as well. And the Neighborhood Association absolutely did vote against this. They voted against it as a six-unit project. We were perhaps inclined to go back to Pope's Hill with the five-unit scheme, but this matter has already been deferred twice and I think it's best left resolved by the board today, one way or the other.
Okay, we'll do that now. Pledge of the board.
Motion for approval with BRA design review.
Second. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Direct to vote, Bob.
Okay, I'm voting with the opposition, I'm sorry. Motion is not carried.
Thank you.
We're looking for Brent Street.
Calling 89 Brent Street, Ward 16. This is BZC number 33236. This is a request to change the legal occupancy from a two to a three-family dwelling. Violations are Article 65, Section 41, off-street parking insufficient. Article 65, Section 8, three families forbidden. Article 65, Section 9, insufficient side yard setback. Article 65, Section 9, FAR excessive. Also, three stories are forbidden in two-and-a-half-story district. Your name and address for the record, please.
I'm attorney Ethan Schaaf, 3 Pearl Street, Stoughton, Massachusetts. I represent Ms. Gay, who is the petitioner in request of a change from a two-family to a three-family.
Okay, how do you...how are you going to get...how does the proposal look to get from a two to a three, Mr. Bizani? Where's it going?
If I heard you correctly, this is a minor renovation. It's already two-and-a-half stories. We already have what I would consider two-and-a-half units in the building.
Where is the new apartment going? The attic?
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Where is the apartment going?
The apartment is literally already there. It's on the third floor. It's...it's...right now, the way it's configured is there's a first floor and then there's a one-and-a-half-story second unit. So it's literally going on to the third...correct me if I'm wrong. It's literally going on to the third floor, but the third floor exists. In order to turn this into a three-family, we're talking two dormers. We're not talking much construction at all. It's already basically there and what we're trying to do is separate one...a one-and-a-half unit and return it to a single unit and then on the third floor, another single unit. Last time we...last time we were in front of you, we did propose this. We explained it pretty fully and the issue was we needed to go back to the neighborhood, make sure the neighborhood was really comfortable with what we did. We have gone back for a second or third time, I want to say, and I am confident in saying the neighborhood is comfortable with what we were doing, only because if you were to look at, and I handed this out, if you were to look at a pictorial of what exists in the neighborhood, this is the proposed three-family. Here's a three-family, here's a three-family, here's a three...it is surrounded by three families that have been converted from twos.
And what do you see, sir?
Uh, that is correct, it is the same. Basically, it's an extension into the attic for the third unit. The bigger concern is the total number of bedrooms. What are the total number of bedrooms within this project?
Total number of all three units.
Nine bedrooms?
How much?
Nine.
No, answer his question. Total number of bedrooms.
All three units. All three units. Ten bedrooms? Ten bedrooms.
And what is the parking proposed? How much parking are you proposing?
I do have parking in my...on the property already, the driveway.
One car.
And also, and two cars from there and also the front and the side of the house.
You have parking...
The front of it, because I'm at the corner of Bren and Joseph. Today's parking, two cars can fit right in front of the house and in my driveway and also on the other side of Joseph Street, which is also part of my section.
Do you have curb cuts on...
There's parking.
Do you have curb cuts on both streets then?
Excuse me?
You have curb cuts on both streets?
I think she means on the street.
Just side street parking.
Curb cuts.
Oh, curb cuts. That was just side street parking.
So, are...so there is no parking on-site but for the two vehicles then?
On-site, two vehicles. Two vehicles in the driveway, it's a single driveway.
Okay, who wants to be heard in favor of this matter?
If I may, the problem with that single driveway, is the single driveway off of Brent Street or Joseph Street?
Brent Street.
It's off of Brent.
The single driveway, according to the drawings, is less than six feet wide. That cannot accommodate parking. You need...
Two cars...my client is just informing me that two cars remain because there's a gate that you can close and make it safe, but two cars easily fit there.
Why don't you propose parking off of Joseph Street? Because if you park off of Joseph Street for the curb cut, your curb cut would be fifty feet from the corner, which would be allowed. The depth of your lot there is 40 feet and you have 11 feet clear from the property line to the rear deck. Now that, you could actually accommodate two cars easily. I do not understand how you fit a car in a less than six-foot-wide parking space unless you're actually really parking in the front yard.
No, I have done it before. I have parked a Wario Jeep in my driveway and another small vehicle, another small vehicle. I have parked a Jeep, Wario Jeep, plus a Honda.
So behind each other?
Behind each other.
Okay, so it's...but it's pretty tight, 16 is pretty tight.
Right, it's pretty tight, but it doesn't stop people from parking, plus there is a gate, you're allowed to close the gate.
Okay, well, so now we know...
Well, are you asking...are we being asked to approve parking?
It's a...they're asking for relief from parking.
In front of the house, in front of the house, two cars can fit right in front of the house.
Please hold on. So that's one of the violations, is off-street parking is insuff...
So that's one of the violations, is off-street parking is insufficient. Also, three families, the use is forbidden, insufficient side yard setback, FAR is excessive, and three stories are forbidden in a two-and-a-half-story district.
We, though, though not specifically requested, if the board is suggesting that we also request a curb cut on Joseph Street, which would accommodate parking, we would ask that the board consider it.
Well, since you haven't applied for it, we can't consider it.
Okay, so we, we would...
But you might want to take it in consideration.
Right, and what we, what we would do is do a follow-on application, in fact, to get the additional parking that would make the board consider it.
So essentially, we're talking about the conversion from a two to a three with the, with the, with the third floor dormers, essentially.
Right, and no parking. Okay, Flavio?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Flavio Vega, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Service. They did go back to the Neighborhood Council a few times to address some concerns. They were strong approval for this project, given that there was off-street parking already existing, taking two cars, so that they did not take the consideration of lack of, so we will go on record in support of this.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Nicole Purvis from Council Yancey's office. We'd like to go in support of eighty-nine Brent Street.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? All right, time for a motion, I think we've heard enough.
Mr. Chairman, I want to make a motion to grant the zoning relief requested, that is adding the third unit, but with following provisos. There is no building code relief, because you may be required to sprinkle this building. And number two, I want it noted that we are not approving those apparent existing parking spaces.
Okay?
Second that motion.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed, because I think the applicant already has the use of that property.
Anyone else opposed? No, just one. All right. So it's approved with those provisos, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Calling three Robinson Street, Ward fifteen. Anybody here for Robinson Street? This is BZC number thirty-three, five sixty-four. This is a request to extend living space into the basement. Violation is Article sixty-five, Section nine, FAR is excessive. Your name and address for the record, please.
Robinson Street, Robinson Street, Dorchester, Mass.
Okay, extend living space into basement. Yeah, parking, our favorite thing. Look, where is this, what is the basement going to be used for, sir?
It's basically just accommodate, play a laundry room and some, a playroom for the kids, and one bedroom.
Okay. What's the ceiling height like there?
It's about seven point, seven point six, seven point seven. And it has both, two entrances, one in the front and one in the back.
The plans are...
The drawing also shows, in fact, that you have a bedroom in the basement, is that's correct?
Yeah, it's one bedroom and play, and a office, also play, playroom for the kids.
How many year dwelling, dwelling is this?
It's a three, three-family building.
And the access stair from the first floor to the basement?
Yeah, there's gonna be...
Is restricted only to your unit?
Yes, yes. There is access both in the front and back.
And where then is the second means of egress for the upper floors? I see the front stair, but I do not see a rear stair. How, how do you get out of the second and third floors? I know it's not part of this, but it has to do with the question on how you actually get down to the basement.
The first, or the first, yeah, the second and third floor, yeah, there is a door in the back that goes to the basement. In addition to that, there is one in the back and also another one outside to the front.
Well, I think that's, that's what I'm trying to get to, as to whether or not the access to the basement is absolutely restricted only to your unit, or is it off the common stairway?
The, it's mostly to the, yeah, the first floor, but also important laundry there for the, for the, for the units to use if they, you know.
Right, okay. So, so what happens is that the second and third floor also have access to the basement, is that correct?
Yes.
Without going outside?
Right.
So they're using the same stair that you are using to get down?
No. It's gonna be a different stairs within, inside the building that goes to the basement for the first floor.
Inside the unit?
Yeah.
Or inside the building?
Inside the unit.
So inside the first-floor apartment?
Yes.
There's another staircase?
Correct.
Can you see one?
Well, I, I, I see, the issue is I see that stair, but I do not see the common stair, which leads me to believe that this stair, in fact, is simply part of the common stair.
No, there is one in the back, and also it's gonna be stairs going down from the first floor.
Look, you know, how many times have we deferred this, just the first time?
First time, yeah.
I'm gonna make a motion for deferral, because unless you have, you have very good architects, have them draw the stair that goes from your unit to the basement, and also the other stair, because I want to make sure it's not the same one.
No, it's not the same, because actually, okay, actually, the previous drawing that was done in the building, there is a stairs, you know, the outside from the back, that goes from all the way down to the, from third floor down to the, to the basement, and it's gonna be one in the first floor into the basement.
You were before, before us in two thousand thirteen?
Yes, yes, we did, and...
And in two thousand thirteen, we granted you relief to put a unit in the third floor, is that correct?
There was already a unit there, I mean, the house was on, on fire, we did, we did all the sprinkler system down, all the way down to the basement, and we, everything was moved, you know, the, all the heating unit was moved to each unit, and the basement is wide open, and with three kids in Dorchester, you know, provide them a space, you know.
Mr. Chairman, I think, just for clarity for the board, by deferring this, have my phone, who's the architect, just produce a moment.
Maybe we can get it back over here without pushing it next year.
Second the deferment.
Okay, all those in favor of deferral?
Aye.
And maybe when he has the plans, we can call him, call the chair or something. If that's okay. Okay, do this, Madam Secretary?
Fine.
Okay, thank you. You're all set for now. We need to get the plans adjusted to reflect what you're proposing, okay? Once that happens, you give the plans to the office in ISD, and they'll set up a new hearing date, okay?
Just for the record, I'd like to read twelve Hope's Hill Street, Ward sixteen, BZC number thirty-three, four thirty-nine, and one oh six Holden Street, Ward sixteen, BZC number thirty-three, four forty. Those were on the agenda last week, so that is not on the agenda today.
All right, like that.
Okay, so calling forty-seven Good Dale Road, Ward fourteen. This is BZC number thirty-three, four fifteen. This is a request to erect a three-family dwelling. Violation is Article sixty, Section nine, FAR excessive, usable open space insufficient, rear yard insufficient, additional lot area insufficient, and side yard insufficient. Also, front, second, front yard, uh, front yard setback is insufficient, and lot size. Additionally, Article sixty, Section forty-point-five, off-street parking design and maneuverability. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, my name is Talib Kennedy, ten fifty-nine Washington Street in Dorchester, Mass.
Okay, are you folks coming to talk about this plan? Are you here to speak on this, you're not the folks?
Yes.
Okay, you can have a seat, it's gonna be a minute or two. All right, what do the plans look like, Mr. Aragio?
The drawings are accurate.
Okay, who wants to be heard on Good Dale? Fareed?
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Fareed Desosis. I would like to go on record and support this with the BRA design, and also majority of the abutters call me in support of the project.
All right, thank you. Walter?
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Walter Applewhite, Council McCarthy's office. There was not a lot of opposition on this project. I believe they've had community meetings on it, and as long as the plans are adequate, we'd like to go on record as supporting it.
Does this take belt?
Yes, ma'am.
It will be stick belt?
Yes, ma'am, will be.
Chairman, members of the board, Tom McDonough from City Council at Large, Steve Murphy's office, echoing the remarks of District Council's office, like to go on record and support.
Thank you. Anyone else on Good Dale? Nope. Motion, nope. Give us your name and address, and tell us why you're here.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Wilfred Irvin. I'm a resident, partner, owner of fifty-one Good Dale Road at Mattapan since nineteen seventy-seven. Okay, the property that is next to me, it's like four thousand five hundred fifty feet, which is, like, four thou, four hundred fifty feet, it's like five hundred fifty square feet too small.
You need five thousand feet to build a house, right?
Yeah, okay, so now, the plan that was presented by the architect shows from my property line to where this house is built, it's only five feet from my property line, and then northwest, south of the building. Okay, so the space between his property and my, my property is not enough, only five feet difference, should be ten. Okay, then, speaking of off-street parking, I notice that I've been living on that street, it's like twenty-five degree downhill, climb, climb, and the high, the high elevation from the streets above, we have drift and snow, and on my side of the street, we get buried during the winter. Even the people that have off-street parking, they, they scramble to get their car out of the backyard, onto the street, people being buried during the winter. Fifty-six is on the high side, fifty-one's on the lower side, and that drift and snow, I can't even get out of my doorway during the winter months. So I, our home of this property being built, this is none of the space.
All right, and you two are together?
Yes, husband and wife.
Any questions, or are you ready for a motion?
Chairman, I want to make a motion to grant the relief requested, but I will address the issue that the neighbor has raised. The house at the front is set thirteen point one feet from the property line. At the absolute rear of the property line, and the property line on your side is ninety point eight feet, at that point, there is the parking that is five feet from the, from forty-seven's property line. So the average distance of the house itself to your property line is ten feet, which conforms basically to the zoning.
Well, according to the architect's drawing that was presented to me at the library, it is in, in an adequate drawing that I've seen, I basically came up with another drawing, since the one I've seen at the library.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion to grant the relief requested with BRA design.
Ms. Aragio, how, how large is that front yard, did you say thirteen feet?
The front yard appears to be modal.
Modal, okay, that's what I wanted to know, okay.
Right, is there a second?
Second.
There is. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion, your question granted, thank you.
Thank you.
Calling seventy-four Georgia Street, Ward twelve.
The house is going to be built? Yes, sir.
This is BZC number thirty-three, five sixty-seven. This is a request to change illegal occupancy. Is the applicant here for Georgia Street? Okay, I'm gonna hold that for a minute. Calling twenty-seven forty-seven Washington Street, Ward eleven. This is BZC number thirty-three, four forty-eight. This is a request to demolish the existing structure and erect a building for six residential units and six parking spaces. Is the applicant here for twenty-seven forty-seven Washington Street, Ward eleven? Okay, we will hold that.
Hold, George.
Calling BZC number seven sixty-seven to seven sixty-nine, East Fifth Street, Ward six. This is BOA number thirty-seven, ninety-two, fourteen. This is a request to extend living space into the basement. Violation is Article fifteen, Section one, FAR excessive. Your name and address for the record, please.
Julie Attridge, seven sixty-nine East Fifth Street, South Boston.
Why would you defer?
The last time? Um, I had to be out of my, out of town for my son.
Okay, so what are we, extending living space in the basement, correct?
Yes.
All right, and what does the plan show for that this time, Ms. Aragio?
The plan shows two bedrooms, a den, and a bathroom, and a storage unit in the basement.
Is this a single family, two-family?
It's a two-family.
Is there a stairway from the unit to the basement?
Yes, and in this case, there's a very clear stairway from the unit to the basement.
Okay, we'll take testimony and see how this goes.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Eric Prentice, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, would like to go on record in strong support. The proponent has kind of been through a, a long ordeal with this project, whereas her former contractor kind of led her down a path that she didn't know she was going down, and she ended up here a couple of years later, so we'd like to go on record in support and kind of put a nice little bow on this far. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Kristina M, on behalf of City Council President Bill Linehan, we'd also like to go on record in strong support. The applicant had reached out to us back in July for the same reasons that Eric just stated, we'd also, you know, just like to approve this for her.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Tom McDonough from City Council at Large, Steve Murphy's office, like to go on record and support, thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Paul Sullivan for City Council, Michael Flaherty, would like to go on record in strong support.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Henry Cohen, on behalf of City Council, Michelle Wu, would like to go on record in support.
All right, anyone opposed, it would just like to be heard? Let's pledge of the board. Motion approved. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any else set? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Calling forty-B Street, Ward six. This is a request to raise the existing structure and erect a building for thirty-seven residential units, two commercial spaces, and parking plus twenty-five vehicles. Violations are Article eight, Section seven, the use is forbidden. This is a takeout restaurant. Article thirteen, Section four, dwellings in non-residential districts. Article fourteen, Section two, additional lot area required. This is minimum lot size for the additional dwelling unit is insufficient. Article fifteen, Section one, FAR excessive. Article seventeen, Section one, usable open space insufficient. Article eighteen, Section one, front yard insufficient. Article nineteen, Section one, side yard insufficient. Article twenty, Section one, rear yard insufficient. Article twenty-three, Section one, the off-street parking for residential is insufficient. Article twenty-three, Section nine, design of off-street parking facilities. This is access, drive, and maneuverability. Article sixteen, Section one, height is excessive. This is both in thirty, in feet, which is thirty-five feet, and three stories maximum allowed. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Stephen Miller, McDermott Co. Mill, one thirty-one Oliver Street in Boston, I have with me Charles Agoras, who's the owner of the property, and our architect, Datanian Brown. This property is located at the corner of B Street and West Sixth Street, one block east of Dorchester Avenue. Site is approximately thirteen thousand five hundred and seventy-five feet. It's within walking distance to the Broadway Station on the MBTA red line and three bus lines. This project has undergone major surgery since it was first proposed, and what, we went through Article eighty small project review, and the BRA approved this project on August fourteenth, two thousand fourteen. The project as approved by the BRA is fifty feet with a two-point-nine-five FAR, which was asked by the BRA to get down to fifty feet, and under... which was asked by the B.R.A. to get down to fifty feet, and under three-point-oh FAR, it's a four-and-a-half-story project. It consists-
And it's still thirty-seven units?
No, it is thirty-two units and thirty-three parking spaces. It's twelve one-bedroom units, twelve two-bedroom units, and eight three-bedroom units. There'll be four on-site affordable units as part of the project, and also a enclosed bicycle storage rack. As I said, this underwent significant input by the B.R.A. and the community, and what you have before you is thirty-two units, fifty-foot height, four-and-a-half stories, and thirty-three parking spaces.
And what are the, what is the range, the size range of the units?
I can tell you, the one-bedrooms are around eight hundred square feet. Two-bedrooms are around eleven to twelve hundred square feet. Three-bedrooms are fourteen to fifteen hundred square feet.
Very good. Any questions, Mr. Zani?
No, the drawing's directed.
Okay, Eric.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Eric Prentice, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services, we'd like to go on record in strong support on this one as well. There was a lengthy community process with this, over five, six meetings with the community. The project started out at a height of sixty-five or so feet, and with, working with the community, they got it down to a level of fifty feet where everyone, well, majority of the residents were happy with. Thank you.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Kristin Abbott, on behalf of City Council President Bill Linehan, we'd like to go on record in support. This definitely has gone through a lengthy process, it started last year with the previous administration. We've got it down from sixty-five feet to fifty, which I think the majority of the residents are okay with. We're happy with the one-to-one parking ratio, and we think this is going to be a good fit for the community. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Tom McDonough from City Council at Large, Steve Murphy's office echoing the remarks of the District Council's office, like to go on record in support.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Paul Sullivan from City Council, Michael Flaherty, would like to go on record in support due to the council's approval of the one-to-one parking ratio.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Henry Cohen, on behalf of City Council at Large, Michelle Wu, would like to go on record in support.
Gary?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Gary Walker Electric, local one-on-three, would like to speak in support also. Thank you.
Any opposed, it would just like to be heard, please?
I've got a couple of questions. Are these all rental or combination of rental for sale?
Condos.
Have the contractor been selected for the project?
Not at this time, no. It's been such a long process that we didn't want to get ahead of ourselves.
What was that doing? What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion for approval continued B.R.A. design review.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed?
Thank you.
Calling five sixty-one R, East Fifth Street, Ward two, Ward six, excuse me. This is BZC number thirty-three, four thirty-eight. This is a request to create off-street parking for two vehicles. Violation is Article twenty-three, Section nine, design of off-street parking facilities. Off-street parking facilities. There's a note that it says, "Subject to easement as required," et cetera. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Richard Sullivan, Sullivan, Long E.C., twenty-four Vernon Street, Wiltshire, Mass. I represent the Russells. They are here today. Robin, Robin Russell.
Where do we have the parking proposed?
Five sixty-one East, five sixty-one R, East Sixth Street is behind five, East Fifth, sorry, is behind five sixty-one. The access is through the alleyway. There was a few for variance by the K Street, a butters, for parking in the past, to open that alleyway for parking. A curb cut was added. There was an existing curb cut on East Fifth.
Is this the final project on that site?
This is the final project on that site.
Okay, we've seen this time and again, okay, okay.
Maybe not, same.
Maybe not, okay.
To our knowledge, the final, there's been K Street and then somebody from East Fifth.
We've seen several of these, correct? So, Eric, would you edify us as to where this is, how this is?
Sure. Good afternoon, members of the board. Eric Prentice, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. So, this is on the opposite side of the other parking, parking spaces that, that abut the properties on K Street. We want to speak in support of this project, of this project with BTD design review, just to make sure maneuverability and, you know, some other things are in order. There are a few other homes that abut this easement that do not have parking, and I think that you could possibly see them down the line.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else on East Fifth?
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Kristin Abbott, on behalf of City Council President Bill Linehan, we'd like to go on record in support of this. We've seen the plans. We believe that they will be able to get in, park two cars easily, but we will recommend BTD design review just to appease the neighbors and some maybe outstanding opposition from the people that don't have the parking.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Tom McDonough from City Council at Large, Steve Murphy's office, we'd like to go on record in support, thanks.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council, Michael Flaherty, like to echo the sentiments of the Mayor's Office, and request BTD's input on this, and would like to go on record in support.
Okay, anyone else? What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion for approval, BTD, in B.R.A. design review.
Back up. All those in favor? Are you opposed? Thank you.
Calling nine thirty-three, East Second Street, Ward six. This is BZC number thirty-two, nine seventy-nine. This is a request to erect a four-story building for twenty-one residential units and parking for thirty-three vehicles. Violations are Article eighteen, Section two, conformity with existing building alignment. Article eighteen, Section one, front yard insufficient. Article nineteen, Section one, side yard insufficient. Article twenty, Section one, rear yard insufficient. Article fourteen, Section one, lot area insufficient. Article fifteen, Section one, FAR excessive. And finally, Article sixteen, Section one, height excessive. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is George Moranci. I'm an attorney for the business address of three fifty West Broadway in South Boston. I point out, this is an Article eighty project. This was approved by the Boston Redevelopment Authority Board last Thursday. The proposal is now for a twenty-unit project rather than a twenty, twenty-one-unit project. The massing of the building is substantially the same through the community process. There have been some nips and tucks made, pulling the building back from the rear property line from what was originally proposed, and around the perimeter of the building, there have been some changes just to enhance a little bit of a public open space. I believe that the project enjoyed substantial community support. I'll let the elected officials, of course, attest to that. I just would point out that I submitted four copies, the only four that remain, of the Article eighty application to the board. The Article eighty application, of course, contains a thorough description of both the project, of the zoning relief being requested, and of the conditions present necessitating the relief that we are requesting. With that, I'll pause and take any questions that members may have.
Right, thank you. Any more questions on the board? Eric?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Eric Prentice, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services, we'd like to go on record in support. As the proponent's attorney said, this has had another lengthy community process that pretty much started last spring, and it came to a point where there's a majority of neighborhood support for this project. Thank you.
Chris?
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Kristin Abbott, on behalf of City Council President Bill Linehan, we'd like to go on record in support. It's definitely been a lengthy community process. There was some small abutter opposition in the beginning, but the proponent has addressed that, so we feel like there is no direct abutter opposition anymore. We think this is going to be a good project for the neighborhood. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Tom McDonough from City Council at Large, Steve Murphy's office echoing the remarks of the District Council, we'd like to go on record in support.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council, Michael Flaherty, would like to go on record in support. The council believes that this would be a great addition to the community.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm sorry, to continue to approve with the continued B.R.A.'s design review.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? All right, you're all set.
Thank you.
Calling seventy-five Leyden Street, Ward one. This is BOA number thirty-eight, eighty-eight, fifty-eight. This is a request to erect a seven-unit building with, with rear parking. Violation is Article fifty-three, Section eight, the multifamily dwelling uses forbidden. Article fifty-three, Section nine, height excessive, FAR excessive, side yard insufficient. Also, Article fifty-three, Section fifty-six, off-street parking insufficient, and fifty-six point five, off-street parking design. Your name and address for the record, please, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Jeff Drago, sixty-two B, Commercial Warfeet. I'm the attorney for the applicant that's with me, Mr. DePrima, who's the owner of the property. What we have before you is a proposal on two lots in East Boston. The address of the project is seventy-five Leyden Street. As you can see in the survey plan that I provided, seventy-five Leyden Street is almost six thousand square foot lot. Mr. DePrima also owns one thirty-one Ashley Street that has an existing one-family home on it. This project has changed dramatically over the last six or seven months. It's now a six-unit condominium project with seven parking spaces provided, five of which are in the interior spots in the building, two of which are in the rear of the property on seventy-five Leyden Street. In meeting with the neighbors, we tried to stay with the surrounding neighborhood. There's multi-unit, three-family buildings on the Leyden Street side, and there are smaller one-and-twos on the Ashley Street side. So, we would only be using Ashley Street for a point of access, along, as you can see, there's an existing curb cut and existing driveway. We would extend that back to have the parking that's sufficient for the project. We've had a lengthy community process on this. When we started, we were at eight units. We've brought that down to six, and we have a lot of parking on site as well.
So, have you combined lots, then?
We have not, no, they're still separated. We just have an easement down, proposed easement for the lot on one thirty-one Ashley Street to, to go into the back for parking access. But there is an existing one-family at one thirty-one now.
So, the existing one-family is going to remain as such?
It's going to remain as such.
And the five-family will be proposed on Ashley Street?
Six, six units on Leyden Street, probably. At the top.
Six units on Leyden and one family on Ashley.
Yes, and seven parking spaces.
Okay, any questions on the plans, Mr. Zani?
The drawing is directed.
All right, she wants to be heard in favor of Leyden Street.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Karen Petralia, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support with B.R.A. design review. We've had three or four abutters meetings, and the Orient Heights Neighborhood Council heard them last night and voted in favor of them. There are some neighbors concerned about, there's a tree on the property, and just some issues, but we feel that the developer has worked closely with them in trying to come up with a, a good plan. So, as I stated, support with B.R.A. design review, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Tom McDonough from City Council at Large, Steve Murphy's office, we'd like to go on record in support as well. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council, Michael Flaherty, would like to go on record in support.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Karen Pearson. I live at one thirty-five Ashley Street in East Boston. I am an immediate abutter to the parcel and have been so since nineteen fifty-two. I have been opposed to this project since its inception, from eight condos to seven condos to six condos. The neighborhood is zoned only for two units. Six units do not go into two units. Article seven dash three, subset B, states that the proponent has to establish substantial hardship and practical difficulty before a variance can be submitted. The proponent has no hardship. He can build a two-family, as it stands now. Section C is that the project cannot be injurious to the neighborhood or detrimental to the public welfare. This part of the neighborhood is on filled-in land, what used to be known as Hog Island. It is on the FEMA hazard zone. The basements get wet, cellars get flooded. The size and massing of this particular structure with its parking lot is going to, with stormwater and groundwater, we think is going to affect the neighborhood adversely. And lastly, if I may, direct your attention to a decision you made in February of twenty twelve, BZC thirty-one dash five twenty-four, where a proponent planned on having an eight-family built in South Boston, but you denied it because it wasn't zoning compliant. That has since come back to you in August of this year because of unremand from the appellate court because of a GPOD. That dynamic does not exist in East Boston. But Congressman Stephen Lynch came to you as a private citizen, much as I am now, and I don't purport to have his cachet, vociferously arguing against that eight-family right next door to him because it wasn't zoning compliant. That structure and parking lot is not compatible with the neighborhood structure. He argued about impervious surfaces, groundwater, groundwater, and runoff, and I don't think they're in a FEMA area. And lastly, the removal of trees that are twelve inches in diameter. The equivalent in East Boston is that this is six units in a zone only for two, zoned only for two families. There is substantial, there's nothing in the neighborhood that replicates this particular size of structure in the parking lot. It's not compatible with neighborhood structures. I don't think South Boston is in a FEMA area, but we are in, of course, the removal of all vegetation, because nothing has been built in that parcel in a century. This is all virgin territory. All of the vegetation will be removed, including a five- or six-foot wide diameter tree that's a hundred years old, and the root system extends way into the neighborhoods, eating up a lot of the moisture. When that tree goes, where our great, excuse me, our great fear is that there's going to be a lot of issues with groundwater issues resulting from this particular project. I do not deny the proponent to build a quality two-family home. That's what it's zoned for. This is not context zoning. It's not compatible with neighborhood structures, and I would ask that you deny it, and we will work with the proponents in the future. I gave this young lady at the end of the table a petition with about eighty signatures, and I also have pitches of some of the neighborhood aspects. That petition was for the seven condo development. We first heard about the six condos only about twenty hours ago. So, you need to be aware of that, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Benjamin Klein. I'm an attorney at D'Ambrosio Brown, located at one eighty-five Devonshire Street, Boston. I'm here on behalf of Robert DeMayo. He resides with his wife and owns one twenty-five Ashley Street. He's a director abutter to both seventy-five Leyden Street, the site of the proposed project, as well as one thirty-one Ashley Street, the site of the proposed driveway. This is a zoned two-family residential district. Mr. DeMayo raised his kids at this property, has lived there for over thirty-five years, and plans on spending his retirement years there with his wife. He emphatically opposes the appellant's request for a variance and respectfully states that he will seek judicial review if necessary. Mr. DeMayo unfortunately cannot be here today because he had a pre-planned trip with his wife that was planned and paid for months ago. But on behalf of Mr. DeMayo, I state that this board must not grant this variance because it fails to satisfy the strict criteria set out in the Boston zoning code at Section seven dash three. Those conditions which the appellant cannot meet are, number one, that there's no unique conditions on this lot that prevent the appellant from constructing a by-right use such as a one-family or two-family residence. Number two, there's no substantial hardship on this lot that prevents a by-right use. And number three, the granting of the variance would be out of harmony with the zoning regulations for this East Boston neighborhood, and it would be detrimental to the neighborhood. And I'd just like to briefly go into these points a little bit more for the board. Number one, there's no unique conditions on the lot. The appellant's claiming that he has a large lot size that is somehow unique. In order to have a unique condition, it has to prevent all possible uses of the property in the absence of a variance. The appellant can clearly build a one-family or two-family dwelling on this lot. This lot is five thousand nine hundred forty-three square feet, and that size is not even unique for this neighborhood. Mr. DeMayo's lot is five thousand eight hundred twenty-four square feet. Mr. De Mayo's lot is five thousand eight hundred twenty-four square feet. Four lots down is a two-family at ninety-one Leyden Street, and that's even larger, six thousand six hundred ninety-five square feet. Ninety-three Leyden Street, five lots down, another two-family, is six thousand seven hundred and eighty-seven square feet. To the extent the appellant is claiming that he has a large double lot, that's somewhat misleading to the extent that that's being pushed because the proposed project is at seventy-five Leyden Street. One thirty-one Ashley Street is only to be proposed, the proposed use is a driveway for access into the condominium complex from, from Ashley Street, as the size and scope of this project precludes vehicle access from, from Leyden Street. Number two, there's no substantial hardship present at seventy-five Leyden Street that prevents the appellant from making a byright use. Surely, a seven-unit or a six-unit, if that's the case, a six-unit use, development of the property would be more profitable to the appellant, but inability to maximize the potential for a parcel of land as a matter of law is not, does not constitute a substantial hardship. Financial hardship on the part of the appellant, also as a matter of law, does not constitute a substantial hardship, and any hardship created by overreaching by the appellant, by the developer here, does not constitute a substantial hardship. In other words, the developer cannot create his own hardship to support a variance request. And I move on to my final point, that the appellant cannot satisfy the third strict criteria set up by the Boston zoning code, and that is that he cannot show that the granting of a variance would be in harmony with the zoning regulations for the East Boston Neighborhood District, and he cannot show that this would, this project would not be detrimental to the neighborhood. This is a seven- or a six-unit building that's in discord with the zoning regulations in a two-family residential district that was established to promote, maintain, and preserve two-family residences in two-family neighborhoods. In fact, eighty-one percent of the homes on Leyden Street are two-families, with the remainder being two, single families and byright three-families. This project is detrimental to the neighborhood as it will increase congestion, traffic, noise, and also there's an issue, current issue, I understand, with street parking. There's a lack of required number of parking spaces proposed by this project. It proposes, well, initially proposed nine, I believe. Now it's moved down to seven, but regardless, the requirement is for twelve parking spaces. So there will be increased issue with parking on the street and more overflow parking from this project, parking in front of Mr. De Mayo's residence as well as other neighbors, also leading to greater disruption to their lives. And my last point is that the detrimental effects of this proposed project would be felt most keenly by the director abutters, particularly Mr. De Mayo. This proposed driveway at one thirty-one Ashley Street, there's a good picture of it on Exhibit B in the memorandum of opposition that was submitted to the board. It shows, it doesn't show the driveway because it's not developed yet, but it shows Mr. De Mayo's residence to the right, and this proposed driveway is going to directly abut, go right up against Mr. De Mayo's property line, and there's going to be cars entering and exiting this condominium complex at all hours of the day and night, and that's going to greatly interfere with Mr. De Mayo and his wife's use and enjoyment of their property and the impact of their, it's going to impact their quality of life. All of the bedroom, all of the rooms on this side of Mr. De Mayo's residence are, in fact, bedrooms, so he will suffer a lack of privacy and increase in noise, illumination from cars and vibrations, and he will have to suffer this day in and day out.
My friend, I think we're, I think we're good. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I respond briefly? First, I want to state that during this process, we have worked directly with the abutters on both Leyden and Ashley Street. We also appeared before the Orient Heights Neighborhood Council that gave us a vote of approval, twelve to four, before their group. I also submitted around nine letters of support from director abutters. Given the size of this lot on Leyden Street, six thousand square foot lot, if you look up and down Leyden Street, there is well more, the majority are three-family homes up and down that area. The reason that we proposed this project on the Leyden Street side is due to the fact that the Ashley Street residents did not want to see the development on the Ashley Street side, so we were cognizant of that fact. The only, right now, council's client had mentioned concern about driveway. He has a driveway on either side of his home, as do most of the houses up and down Ashley Street have side driveways. The interior parking was designed to appease the residents that had concerns with the parking in the rear, and, you know, I would say that this is absolutely within the makeup of the East Boston District on the Leyden Street and Ashley Street area.
Okay. Anything else from the board?
Have we, I lost track. Have we heard testimony from the mayor's office on this?
Yes, support.
Yes, we went on record with, for support with B R A design review.
Okay, thank you. You're not standing to be heard, are you?
Anthony Belanti, I'm a member of the Orient Heights Civic Group. This case, this project came before us yesterday, got very strong support, and we would love to see it get built.
All right, thank you. What's the pleasure of the board? If anyone has.
motion approved B R A design review.
One second. Okay, it's approved, approval. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? I'm opposed.
I'm opposed.
I'm opposed. I'm going to vote with the motion for approval. So it passes. Thank you.
Calling two seventy-three Webster Street, Ward One. This is B O A number thirty-seven, thirty-five, seventy-four. This is a request to confirm the occupancy as a three-family dwelling and convert it into a three, into a full-family dwelling. Also, to construct new exterior decks in the rear yard. Violations are Article fifty-three, Section eight, the full-family dwelling is forbidden, Article fifty-three, Section nine, lock area for the additional dwelling unit insufficient, F A R excessive, building height, that is, the number of stories is excessive, and Article fifty-three, Section thirty-six, off-street parking insufficient. Your name and address for the record, please.
Matthew Martin, two seventy-three Webster Street. I'm the owner and representing my family in our efforts to convert our three-family home into a four-unit dwelling, and by doing that, we're, we're finishing the ground floor. Four-unit buildings are already the norm on this side of Webster Street, which is on a hillside where they have basically full, full walkout basements and full exposure in the rear of the building. So it's actually pretty much the norm on this side of the street. Seventy-three percent of the ground floor is above grade in this case, so we feel that presents an exceptional opportunity to get, you know, the maximized light air. It also has extremely tall ceilings, so we can get, you know, basically a unit that would feel comparable to any other unit. It also opens out to a backyard and patio, so it'd actually be a very inviting place. We also are looking forward to the opportunity to build some rear decks that would allow us to get a second means of ingress to the third floor, which currently has none, and we, we did gain excellent support from the neighborhood group in our, in our proposal.
You're requesting two things, to confirm the occupancy as a three-family, and to add the additional unit, and then to build the rear decks, right?
That's right.
Okay, so have you been paying taxes as a three-family?
Yes.
Okay, and all utilities have been separated, et cetera?
Yes. It's definitely a three-family in its use.
Okay, great. Anyone want to be heard? Julian.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Julian Doherty, on behalf of Corinne Walsh, like to go on record of support of this application. Jeffrey's Neighborhood, Jeffrey's Point Neighborhood Association also voted to support, so we'd like to go ahead and voice that at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of board, Tom McDonough from City Council at Large, Steve Murphy's office, like to go on record in support.
Okay. Anyone else to be heard in this matter in favor? Any way in opposition? Oh, you people come fully in opposition? It's a pleasure of the board.
Motion for approval with B R A design.
Second. Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Thank you.
Okay.
You can't stand your own plans. That's right.
Calling seventy-four Georgia Street, Ward Twelve.
Yes, sir. Oh, thank you. Thank you. Thank you.